Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Crowe. Mrs. Kelsmith.
She's here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules the council state, that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, you please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Hoover, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. I'm not a Republican Party member. I'm not a Democratic Party member. I don't have any party connection whatsoever. The concerns of council include local security, LS, and national security, NS. For reference, the United States Constitutional State, 1789, USCS, and the United States National Security State, 1947, USNSS. The USCS-USNSS fusion emerged under President Dwight David Eisenhower, DDE, continuing from yesterday, 30 August 22 during my public comment, number six, 1957, 23 September. Kansasan Republican, DDE, signs Executive Order 10730, federalizing the Arkansas National Guard entering Army soldiers to integrate Little Rock Central High School, using his USCS authority to enforce the 1954, 17 May, U.S. Supreme Court desegregation decision, Brown versus the Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas. Because, in my view, he viewed, he saw civil rights equality, but not equity, as a USNSS defense position. Number seven, 1958, 2 September, RDDE signs the National Defense Education Act. That's where we get the National Student Loan Program. Number eight, 1956, 11 September, RDDE inaugurates his People-to-People Program. That's where we get Sister Cities International, and therefore for Pittsburgh, Wuhan, and China. USCS, DDE at work. But, the USNSSD was also simultaneously at work. DDE encouraging the CIA, NSA, and FBI surveillance programs. DDE encouraged the extension of existing bioweapons, chemical weapons, and nuclear weapons programs very substantially between 1953 and 1961. USCS IC and USNSS IC, two ICs. That's the model for current presidents, governors, and mayors. USCS and USNSS. Biden, Wolf, Ganey use a role model that, in my view, is psychopathological. We expect our presidents and governors and mayors to not lie to us. And at the same time, we do expect them, on occasion, to protect us, to lie to us. Now, do you, councilors, think that the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act of 1978 renewed 2012, FISA courts, and national security letters are compatible with the U.S. Constitution? I'll take that to be a yes. I do not agree.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is John Colburn.
Good morning. My name is John Colburn. I am president of the congregation at Smithfield United Church of Christ at 620 Smithfield Street, our home since 1787. For more than 30 years, Smithfield United Church of Christ has provided shelter to the homeless population in some form or another. Bethlehem Haven started in our building. This spring, we were informed that Operation Safety Net, Cold Winter Shelter, would not be using our building this coming winter because of the construction of Second Avenue Commons. In 2020, with funding secured with the help of the county administrator, the mayor's office, and the Urban Redevelopment Authority, life safety improvements were made to our building. For this, we are grateful. With that in mind, we at Smithfield want you to know that we are open to assisting, as we are able to be a temporary shelter facility as the city explores its options on the development of more permanent, of more permanent solutions to homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. We can trade off the ADO and Mon Air. Mark Coletta was a city's Pittsburgh firefighter who fell during the line of duty. He was honored with a memorial plaque at Mon Air School. That plaque remains on school property. The school property has been squandered and disregarded by the Pittsburgh School Board. It is extremely appropriate that Mark's memorial plaque stays there along with other remembrances of former firefighters who have passed away, and they should not be forgotten. Thank you for your service, all dedicated fire service personnel. Are you for the people of Mon Air or against the cross-party owners? Do you stand with Mayor Ganey, State Representative Benham, and Councilman Coghill for the creation of Green State to replace the detrimental school buildings? The Michael Mullen Green State is for all ages and ages of people. shady trees, not shady deals in Mon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker, and I apologize, I don't have a last name, is Robert. Is there someone with this name? Robert, please come to the podium, provide your name, neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name's Rob Axon. I'm Pittsburgher since 1978. Came after my Army career of 11 years to pursue a PhD at Carnegie Mellon. It was a wonderful time for me. The Steelers win the Super Bowl, the Pirates win the World Series, the Steelers win the Super Bowl again, and my thesis advisor won the Nobel Prize. So I realize, I've really come to the right place. So Pittsburgh is my hometown. My kids have been born here, have started companies here. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts today and applaud what I gather is the council's efforts to reexamine issues of zoning for the sake of finding ways of expanding housing, particularly affordable housing. And so I want to applaud that effort. Over the last 10 years, since I've been retired, I've been studying the problem of homelessness, not just here in the United States, but in other countries as well, Australia, New Zealand, trying to be boots-on-ground, going around, spending time on the streets, talking with everybody I can. Most of it has been in California. Over the last year, I've traveled across the country six times, looking at things in various cities. But California is where my daughters live, so I spend a lot of time there. And I've looked at homelessness from San Diego all the way up to Sacramento. And just as you all know, that what everybody says, from the city workers, the police, and councilors, is almost the exact same words. It's never been this bad, and it's getting worse. So I really do think this idea of being expanding the options for exploring ideas. And what I would like to suggest is to look for ways that you can expedite the process by allowing maybe temporary permits to do things, not only on private land, but public land, to just try out some ideas. And then we could take this through school projects and getting kids interested in it, to doing, you know, conferences, and maybe CubeCon at the Three Rivers Arts Festival, to developing companies, and so on. So to conclude, summarizing, you know, ideas are cheap. It's easy to come up with grand ideas. But converting ideas into innovations that can succeed in the marketplace is very hard. And I think the council can play a key role in this by acting as a catalyst to enable people, public and private, to just try things out, you know, for a month, and if it doesn't work, or there's something bad happens, then just stop. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. And I know you guys have been super busy. And I brought to your attention the big erector sets with the road detour signs that are just left everywhere, that I can see in South Side and Beachview, even headed up to Dormont on Broadway. So I did some homework for you. Yesterday, I decided to go out and look on the back of the signs. And it's not pen dot, is one thought. There are distinctive companies, Road Safe Traffic Systems, Raylan Enterprises. Those two seem to be the biggest junk piles. And when looking at the reviews, they won't pick them up if they're damaged. Well, Pittsburgh's becoming the tropical storm area of winds. Your signs are going to get damaged. A new one in Beachview that never ever leaves their sign behind, all women operated, AW Safe, Always Safe, all women. The one outside your window, it seems to be with Peoples Gas, is Ellen and Security. So all of these things are trackable. I saw some new signage put up in South Side along the bike trails. We have erector sets that are cemented in for the permanent signs. I think, and I think these things, when they're pre-planned, need to come through the city so we can track them. They could be attached to the existing, they're literally erector sets for big boys. They could be attached with nuts and bolts, or in the South Side along the bike lanes, they've used big, thick zip ties. But there needs to be some kind of a tracking. Somebody's going to get hurt. A lot of these, when they're knocked over, it's like a four-pronged bottom, and they're all piled on top of each other. What happens when a kid is running and they fall? That's a stab waiting to happen. If you need me to do some more research, I'm more than happy to do it for you. Oh, and by the way, speaking of research, Martin's Auto never got a traffic ticket. Lexus got one when I called and said their pretty yellow car with balloons was literally parked up on the yellow ramp coming down from Pauling to Broadway. They need to stop again. Getting a green light, they've never, maybe one in the past, or two, $114 tickets and $117 tickets for parking where they weren't supposed to. You can get out of debt for these guys, getting parking six cars on a daily basis on a sidewalk. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council today? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, council. I had no intention of speaking today, actually. Came over for the overdose awareness. I myself found myself seven years ago, coming out of Allegheny County Jail homeless, and trying to get clean, and trying to rebuild my life and everything that I'd lost. I now own a building over on First Avenue. I own an art gallery and a tattoo studio. But I also have access to some other properties here in the city of Pittsburgh, as well as one just on the border in McKees Rocks. It would suit 102 beds, or 102 people it could house. And I seen the initiative for the homeless on the news the other night, and I reached out to Teresa and I asked her about this. It's a turnkey building. There's a church on site. There is a full, commercial-sized kitchen on site. There is six acres, I believe, of, you know, landscape. It's a beautiful facility that would be able to take in quite a few of the homeless people and put an immediate dent in what the city's trying to propose, you know. And it would look really good for, you know, the city to announce something, say they're going to do something, and follow through with it swiftly, you know. And I have access to this building immediately. And I would love to, you know, hopefully gain the attention of city council. And if not this building, maybe, you know, another building. But, you know, anything that I could do, now that I'm, you know, it's seven years that I've rebuilt my life, you know, I spend time trying to give back and do whatever I can, you know, whether it be charity, or drug and alcohol, you know, counseling, adolescent counseling, you know, if I can be of any assistance, I would absolutely love to be. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak before council today? Seeing none, that'll move us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law. And Madam Clerk, will you please read Bill 520, 565, 566 together? They were all held for executive session.
Bill number, excuse me, Bill number 520, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of JHOC Inc. Doing Business as Premier Transportation and Their Attorneys in the Amount of $50,000 Relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number 565, Resolution Amending 289 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Block and Associates LLC for services related to an employment-related matter by increasing the total spend by $10,200 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. And Bill number 566, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips for legal services in connection with collective bargaining in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three bills receive an affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers. Bill 647.
Bill 647, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund Board, as approved by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh pursuant to Chapter 272 of the City Code of Ordinances.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 648.
Bill 648, Resolution Authorizing 14 Open-In Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Architecture and Interior Design Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options in providing for funding of the cost thereof.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. I do have a question, and I can get mine answered by Tuesday, and it's for a couple of these Open-In Professional Services agreements. I'm just, they did send the list over of who was actually going to be awarded. I'm just curious how many are minority or women-owned businesses. And I don't see Jennifer, well, I see Joshua.
Counsel, yes, yes. Good morning, counsel. I am the source specialist that's in charge of administering these contracts. I do not have that number in front of me. I can't tell you that they did appear before the EORC, and I believe the majority of them passed. I can check with our EORC representatives and get back to you as soon as possible. I can get that out today.
Okay, thank you. And that would be for Bills 648 and 649. I did look at the list of vendors.
For both.
And I recognize some, but I'm just curious of the overall number. Thank you. If there's none.
Not a problem.
I just.
Madam President?
I just want to add, because they also include how many are veterans, because that was also part of the legislation that we had.
Joshua, if you didn't hear, just also let us know how many may be veteran-owned businesses. Any further discussion?
Yes, no.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 649.
Bill 649, Resolution Authorizing 21 Open-In Professional Services Agreements with Multiple Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Architecture and Interior Design Services and Energy Efficiency Consulting Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options in providing for funding of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to follow. Is this for DPW for our own facilities, or is this actually kind of for architectural and like planning on-call for other things like city planning and neighborhood planning and things like that?
I believe it's for various departments throughout the city. Joshua could probably better answer it.
I'm sorry.
But I believe it's for various departments throughout the city.
Joshua, could you answer that?
Counsel, you're correct in your assumption. This is for, so these are housed within the Office of Management and Budget, or the ones that the administrative contracts, I will say that the majority of the use will come from DPW, but these are available to any city department should they be correctly using them. We always work with the department to make sure that this is the proper solicitation for them before they go out and actually use these kinds of contracts.
Thank you. Thank you for the answer. I appreciate that. And we certainly do need it for our own facilities. But I appreciate that there is some opportunity if members have projects in their districts, that many of us have been, are concerned that we don't have enough personnel in other city departments like DOMI for planning for mobility projects, or our own planning department is really struggling with staffing. So when we're trying to move forward, you know, rebuilding neighborhoods and investing in communities and addressing things like housing and homelessness, we're really thin in our internal staffing. And this kind of outsourcing may be an opportunity while we, as a council, figure out how to strengthen our organizational chart. So, thank you, sir.
Ms. Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 650.
Bill number 650, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reallocate Emergency Solutions Grant, CARES Act, funding and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services, and/or data collection activities."
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
Discussion, Council President?
Thank you. Could we have some update on this? Is there someone here to discuss this?
Mr. Russell is here with us.
Hi. How are you? Good. Could you tell me what this, exactly, is there places that you're looking for emergency shelter? Is this anything that can work with conjunction with Councilwoman Gross's legislation? I'm just wondering what this is, what all it is.
All right. There are two pieces of legislation, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the right one.
Okay. Could they be read together?
We were on 650. Is there another one you want read with it?
Well, no, we'll get to the other one later.
Okay.
I believe you might be talking, just because my sheet of paper is different, so correct me if I'm talking about the wrong one here.
Okay.
But I'm hopeful you're talking about the one where we're moving money from certain organizations to another one, in regards to Neighborhood Legal Services, Family Mediation Council, Three Rivers Communities, Bethlehem Haven, and Goodwill Southwestern PA.
I don't think that is the same, no.
The text file. That's in the text file.
Give me that number again. I'm sorry.
It's Bill 0650. It's here.
It is, Councilwoman Strasburg says it is the same bill. It's just that that's the text file, and we're with the subtitle.
Okay. I have it right here. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I should have grabbed this. No, we're good. No, what we're doing here is we're actually, the money was already allocated to certain groups. So what we're doing is that we're reallocating funds that couldn't be spent by certain groups to groups that can spend the money.
How were the groups selected?
There was the application process. Groups applied to receive these funds. Applications were reviewed by members of OMB, by members of Allegheny County Economic Development, by the Bureau of Department, excuse me, the Department of Human Services through DHS, and people with individuals with lived experience.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? See, Councilwoman Gross.
I guess I will ask a follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. Russell. So, we had a public comment earlier that the county had removed the beds from Smithfield Church, which has been acting as one of our winter shelters, right? So it's not open like right now, but when the weather gets cold, it is typically open. And in our briefings with the administration on homelessness over the last six, seven weeks or so, I thought I distinctly remembered that the administration was counting on Smithfield Street being open so that we would have enough shelter beds for our currently estimated unhoused population. Do you, are you in the same conversations here as you reallocate to figure out where additional shelters will be, if I'm hearing? Is this part of the same conversation?
No, ma'am. Actually, Smithfield was funded by the Department of Human Services, strictly by Allegheny County. We, the city, did not fund that. So we have not been involved in this conversation.
That's not my question. Are you in the same conversation with figuring out where we will achieve the shelter beds?
No, ma'am. I am not involved in that conversation.
So what are we doing? Can, maybe you can tell me again, what are the goals for this? How much, how much are the total dollars in front of us here? For 650, it is, I actually don't see a dollar amount. Revised, can you tell me, baby, how much money you're moving and what you're trying to achieve with it? Because I heard you, but I guess I misunderstood what you were doing.
We are reallocating funds. Okay.
How much funds?
There are four pieces of money that we are moving. Give me one moment here. All right. There are $70,000 we are removing from Neighborhood Legal Services. There's $30,000 we are removing from Family Council Western Pennsylvania. We are decreasing the contract for Three Rivers Communities from $125,000 down to $73,847.92. With that money, we're adding money to Bethlehem Haven, where the contract will go up from $487.06 to $537.168. We are also, I don't know if you were writing, I'm sorry, I'm looking down. Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania, we are increasing their contract from $67,000 to $151,690. And Salvation Army, we are increasing their contract from $58,000 to $68,000.
Okay, I apologize. So Bill 650 says that, I'm looking at the text file now myself, it says that it's decreasing Emergency Solutions Grant by $151,152.8. It says that it is increasing Pittsburgh Mercy Life Center, Bethlehem Haven, by $56,462, and increasing Goodwill. But these seem to be different organizations with different dollar amounts.
What happened was, when that piece of legislation was done previously, it was all allocated as one amount. It was not broken down by organization. So that's why.
So we can't vote on something differently than you have in front of us. Either we're reading two different bills, or you've got the, we have the wrong legislation in front of us for this number. You know, we were very interested and supportive of this topic, I think, but I didn't see in our legislation any of the organizations that you read. And I've got organizations that you didn't read, and they're completely different dollar amounts. So why don't we just hold on? Do we mind if we just kind of skip this bill? Because maybe when we get to your second bill, that we don't know which one it is yet, maybe this will clarify itself. Maybe we just, Mr. Chair, should we just like move on?
Well, I was also actually trying to pull it up to try to get clarity. While I do that, Council.
Oh, I'll wait.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I think there's some confusion in general, because
Um, I think there's some confusion in general, cause um, I was on previous emails for this piece of legislation and also. Where is this? It's in my, anyway, there were two bills that related to this that I've been in communication with OMB. I think previously they thought that both bills will be in my committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it seems that one of them showed up in finance. Uh, I mean, you know, obviously when we see bills that come across that say that we're gonna allocate more funding to a shelter at a time whenever homelessness is, is, uh, is visible to everyone. So I'm hesitant to, to hold, um, for that purpose. There's other people that came in the room, um, and also that are in the room that are within OMB.
Nobody.
Is there any, what's that?
I just said, look, leave it open until we read the other bill.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah. Okay. But while I have the, my time, I'll just, um, I'll just ask the one question.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, can you explain emergency service grants for the public?
Yeah. Emergency Solutions Group grants.
I'm sorry, emergency solutions.
No, you're, you're, you're fine. It's perfectly fine. Uh, the purpose of emergency solutions grant is actually to engage homeless individuals and families living on the street is, that's one. Improve the number of quality, improve the number and quality of emergency shelters for homeless individuals and families. Three, help operate shelters. Four, provide essential services to shelter residents. Five, rapidly rehouse homeless individuals and families. And six, prevent families and individuals from becoming homeless.
How much, uh, how much, um, how many millions of dollars did we get for that?
Uh, for the ESG CV grant, there were six point four million for the ESG CV grant. Our normal, uh, ESG CV, uh, excuse me, our normal ESG funds are a lot less than that, but those are COVID funds.
And then these are the COVID funds, right?
Yes, sir.
The CV ones, yeah. Okay, but typically every year we get ESG funds around six million.
No, no, sir. That's what I'm saying. It's normally a lot less.
A lot less.
Um, for instance, I'm actually pulling out a sheet here. So just over the last three years, uh, this for twenty twenty-two, the allocation is one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. For twenty twenty-one, it was one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. For twenty twenty, it was one million, two hundred and sixteen dollars and one hundred, two hundred and sixteen and one hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So you're telling me that the city of Pittsburgh receives funding specifically to address homelessness and the amount is not greater than two million every year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So where does that, where, I mean, we see homelessness has increased, um, you know, you know dips and dives every year. It can fluctuate from four hundred to eight hundred. Where does that funding lie to, to solve these issues? If it doesn't, is it lying in some other, some other, uh, funding that we get from the federal government?
No, it's a part of how, of our whole CD allocation, but there's specific funds just for emergency solutions grants. As I said previously, when it comes to the awarding of these funds, we go through an allocation process. Up until this year, ESG fun, uh, ESG funding was handled jointly with Allegheny County Economic Development, starting with program twenty-two, uh, excuse me, program year, uh, twenty twenty-two. The funding is now a joint program with Department of Human Services.
Joint program with Department of Human Services?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, oh.
Oh, no. If you can explain more.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say so, as I was saying previously, there's an application process, groups apply to receive these funds and we award the funds to the organizations. Uh, there is a certain amount they receive and as I, once again said, there's only five categories where these funds can be used. Street outreach, emergency shelter.
Yeah.
Homeless prevention, rapid rehousing and HMIS, which is data collection system that's housed by the county.
Okay. And can you explain the, what, what are you on with DHS? I missed that part.
I'm sorry, what are we doing with them?
Yeah.
Uh, they joint, we jointly administer the program. The program, uh, ESG has, uh, covered the city of Pittsburgh.
How much funding is in the total program?
Oh, we receive an allocation. It depends on the years. I just went through the previous allocation amounts. I'll just use twenty twenty-one. We received one point two million. The counties, I'm not gonna act like I know their allocation off the top of the head. I'm, I apologize, but it was around. Same plus or minus around one point two that we also receive. So we do a joint program together.
So they, they receive an equal amount?
Uh, yes. However, I would like to also, uh, mention that when it really comes to serving homelessness as a whole, Allegheny County Department of Human Services receives a whole different pot of funding that really controls and oversees the homeless population as a whole. So I don't know if anybody has worked here previously, but I know that homelessness is a situation that you, everybody wants to tackle. I would really suggest that if nobody has contacted Albegal Horn, the Director of Bureau Homeless of Services for the Department of Human Services, somebody should contact her in regards to working together in a partnership.
Okay, thanks. I just want to work through some of that for the public. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I've got Council President and Councilwoman Strasberg.
I went first, so do you want to go her first round? Yeah, I went once, so I'll go second round.
Thank you. Um, thank you for being here and for that explanation. I feel like I am peeling back an onion here because I, I'm learning more and more every day and today I'm learning even more. So according to, I realize there might be a discrepancy, but according to what I'm looking at, we are reducing the emergency solutions grant in one of the line items from about, by about a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Um, and in other line items, it gets clear where the emergency solutions grant is being allocated. Um, Pittsburgh Mercy Life Center, Bethlehem Haven, Goodwill. For the ones that are just described as emergency solutions grant and the deliverable is emergency solutions grant, what, how are, how is that money being used? That was originally about six million and now down to five point nine million. Is that city, is that being used not as a grant to a sub, a sub-grantee or sub-recipient, but Alex, you know, actually used by the city and the county jointly?
No, those grants, it's still going to a sub-grantee. So when you say sub-grantee, you mean one of those organizations.
One of those organizations, yeah.
Yes, they're still going to organizations you just previously mentioned. Even with this reallocation of funds, we're actually giving it back to these organizations to help spend down these funds. With it comes to this ESG CV funding, we have a certain amount of time that we have to spend these funds. Actually HUD increased the timeline. The original timeline for these funds to be spent was actually September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. However, this past April HUD increased the deadline to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Along with that, we had a fifty percent spend deadline of June fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, which we did hit. But the main goal is to spend down these funds and we're still using the exact same organizations who've already received these funds to help spend down these funds.
So this is getting pretty technical, but then that sort of top line item, line item, I guess, or job, well, they're all the same number, I guess, zero, zero, one ending and zero, zero, one, nine, that has five point nine million, still budgeted it for. Are we just holding that money until we can then continue to allocate it to those others? I'm just trying to figure out how that one is spent.
See, this is the part where I was talking about, when these funds were legislated previously a few years ago, it was all lumped to one line item. If it had been done, I'm not gonna use, I don't want to say correctly, but had we done it and allocated to each individual organization, it would have looked a lot different.
Got it.
But unfortunately, we lumped it into one line item. So within that six point four million dollars, you've gotten multiple organizations receiving funding.
So this is now a mishmash of how we used to do it combined with how we're currently doing it, and that's why it's a little bit
Yes.
confusing for us. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Second round, Council President?
Can I have Director Pollock come to the table, please? You can come to the table, Director, over here. This way. Come around. If you don't mind. Do you want to come to the table so you can sit down? Cause it looks like it's gonna be a longer conversation than we thought.
Oh, give me a.
Thank you, Director. I know that you're wanting to clarify something or to add.
Kelly just spoke to the point that I was planning to make that I just think had not been, um, perhaps just to be, uh, further clarify. As, as Kelly just mentioned in response to Councilperson Strasberg's question, the older budget years where these allocations were made, they were not, the deliverables were not listed in an itemized way. And so moving those funds from that older line item that was a single line item that included the entire program into the now itemized format that we currently use is the reason for some of the inconsistency in the wording in the bill because we're moving from one budget year where it was listed a different way than we do now. So Kelly spoke to that in that last response. That was the main point I wanted to make, um, cause I think it speaks in part to the question you were asking Councilwoman Gross. More generally, um, going back to a question that I, I heard you ask, Councilwoman Gross, as I was walking over. The relationship between these reallocations and other funds expended on this work by the county or other agencies that play a role here is still, um, a net neutral, the same amount of money is being expended. Um, what is happening here is that some of the organizations that had previously been awarded funds have not had the capacity to expend them quickly enough to meet our deadline. And that, of course, is not good for anyone, both from a compliance perspective for the city and because it means that the funds are not being delivered for their intended purpose in addressing homelessness. At the same time, there are other recipients, um, on our current list who have additional capacity to deploy the funds on a timeline that aligns with our criteria. So this is a net neutral movement within the program of the funds from, to, to providers who have the ability and the capacity to put them on the street in a timely manner. That's, that's the overarching, um, objective here. It's separate and apart from other efforts that councils involved and the administration is involved in and others' conversations around expanding our activity in this space generally beyond the scope of what is funded through ESG CV. Um, you know, we are continuing to work towards solutions on that that we'll be happy to discuss in the post-agenda that's coming up and in other, um, contexts. But this is, um, a redeployment of funds, which is not atypical as we come towards the end of the funding cycle to ensure that the funds are all expended by the deadline, to, uh, to make sure that those organizations with the capacity to deploy them, whereas some of the recipients just have run into snags, delays or challenges and cannot fully utilize them in time, we reshuffle. It's similar to what we do in capital projects and moving between deliverables when challenges arise, so.
So for me, I just want to say I've known Kelly for a long time, so I, I appreciate hearing your explanation too. But thank you for coming to the table also, Director. I just wanted to make a couple of things. I think this legislation is supposed to have the number on our sheet in the front here. So I think sending it over and, and over correct would help us understand a little bit better, so we don't have to scrimmage through, you know, the text file, uh, which is much thicker and lengthier. But, um, thank you for having us here, madam folks, that we could, uh, do that. So I'll just say make sure that that's clarified for any future legislation in coming forward for next week so that that number's included. And, um, is this part of any of the stuff that, you know, so you mentioned about everyone working together and one of the things I said yesterday is we're gonna form a task force, a committee, a special committee to work on homelessness. And so I'd like, I appreciate the, um, suggestion, who to include. I want to say I appreciate, um, Chief Frank. She's been very helpful, um, in working with her. But I think that it's, it's imperative for our, the people that we hire to work on these issues and the people you hire to work on these issues to collaborate together and to make sure that everyone is in, at least internally, that we're having these conversations and everyone's at the same table. I hear of all these different organizations and different people, um, having different committees and different task forces and different, but I don't hear of everyone being at the same table. And I, and I keep saying city council needs to be at those tables because you can talk about all you want to do. The fact is we're the ones that are gonna move the money or not. And so if you want to do some things, let's do some things together to really make some changes, but make sure city council is at that table. So we're gonna form a task force. I hope that you'll work with us on that and be supportive of that and be supportive of our efforts and that, um, we can somehow come up with some solutions together. Cause I think this is something we all care about tremendously. We know that we can't do things without the mayor's office. We can't do things without the county and also city council is part of that equation. So I just want to make sure that we're all working together, um, going forward. But thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing up the, um, the concerns there. Thank you.
Is there a second round?
I want a second round now. You finished, Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
I appreciate it. So, um, I'm gonna restate a little bit about what Mr. Russell and, and Mr. Pollock just said is that it's not just that we're meeting our compliance deadlines, but the, literally the money that is sitting there now because those groups are not reaching their capacities, the money isn't actually hitting the streets and helping the people it should help. So by doing these movements, we're actually making sure that the money is doing the work it's supposed to be doing now and not later. And so I really appreciate, um, that explanation and indulging me on my, on my questions because that's exactly what council's been asking you to do. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Just think, this is a good time to highlight some other programs that are funded through the ESG. I think it's CV, which is the, the AHN Roots Program. And, um, so do you, okay, so just to confirm.
Yes, AHN.
The AHN Reaching Out on the Streets Roots Program.
Thank you.
That does outreach work to, uh, you know, vulnerable populations like homelessness and also people with substance use disorder. Is this ESG CV?
Yes.
That they're funded under?
Yes, sir.
So I'm, okay, so how much is that currently funded at approximately?
They're about two million dollars, sir.
Okay. And they're in three zones. And initially that was, uh, you know, the solution, the initial solution to how to work better with the county, from my understanding. Cause everyone that we're seeing outside, our roots individual, our, you know, root, Roots Outreach workers are going out and signing them up for housing. So everyone that everyone sees outside is signed up for housing. And so I just want to take a moment just to highlight the effort that has been put forward previously so that, you know, the, the issue is getting into housing. That the how, the availability of housing. And not that I'm questioning you on that, but I just wanted to just talk about what we're already funding in terms of this ESG CV. I don't want this moment to leave and then the, you know, somehow, you know, we don't really capture what we're already funding, you know, with this whole six million.
Right.
Yeah.
So we are funding, eh, um, AHN does our street, uh, street outreach program. Uh, we funded multiple shelters. We funded Goodwill, Salvation Army, Light of Life, Beth Haven.
That's fine. I, I just wanted to talk about that for a second. And just to confirm that it was, that that program was being funded through ESG CV right now.
Right. If I could just, just add a couple more, uh, we have what is called our lead provider agencies, organizations that do the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. I just want to also mention that we have Auburn Lee and we also have, um, uh, Volunteers of America also doing, uh, funding with ESG CV funds too. So there are organizations on behalf of the city out there doing, uh, work for the homeless. And, go ahead.
If I may add something very quickly on that note, um, as a further clarification to the constraints, yeah, in the, that are, that are involved in this reallocation, the providers that are, have, were approved through the application process are, because they were approved the application process, the only eligible recipients for this batch of funding, which is why this reallocation is occurring within the scope of the already funded organizations, just by increasing the amounts for those who have excess capacity and reducing the amounts for those who have been struggling to, to hit their spending requirements. So that is separate and apart from the broader conversation you were talking about, Council President, about expanding our overall work. This is a, uh, a, an adjustment in the funding levels of an existing program to better and more efficiently, you know, get the funds delivered. Um, and then there is additional work of, of and beyond that, that is the topic of further conversation now, but we're constrained in the reallocation to the already approved providers under the existing program.
Yeah, I'm good. I didn't know if, if that comment, does that relate to the roots at all that I was talking about?
Be, be, because you were asking about the broader scope of things not involved in the reallocation. I just wanted to note that, the full list that Kelly read is kind of the universe for this program based on that joint application process.
Right.
So I just wanted to add.
Yeah, I know it doesn't exist in this first.
Yeah.
First and there's, I mean, it's not gonna be, the expansion of that program doesn't exist in
Yeah.
in this funding. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess?
I'll, I'll be very brief. Um, two things. One is as we talk about homelessness, we're really talking about two things. Um, one is homelessness as a subsection of the lock of afforded housing generally, right? I'll come back to that. But the second thing is, and, um, that the homeless population has multiple needs, multiple issues. Simply having many of, some of them actually will not go into a home if you, if you offer it to them because their dis, dis, dysfunctions are so severe, they choose to be on the streets. And so as we address. And so as we address the homeless problem, we need to always understand it is not a brick and mortar problem alone. It is, it is a social service problem and that they need all of these, right? Now here, I see the person over at the chair, right, is nodding his head. They need all these counseling and all these other wraparound services to be supportive, sometimes criminal justice issues, whatever it is they need. But then I just want, every time we talk about affordable housing now, I think I'm going to start saying this every time. And I have great respect and great admiration for Director Pollock, who's at the table. And I've been saying this now, I think, for six years. If we are serious about affordable housing, in my humble opinion, the only way we can put more houses on the street is to take out a bond. Whether we take out a bond, a one-time bond for 60 million, or we take out a series of bonds for like 60 million one year and then three years, 60 million, then another year, 60 million, we have to have upfront money. And I say this because there was a posting really today on Facebook when people were chatting about the land bank, thinking that the land bank by itself can rehab homes. And that's not true. We need a source, a pot of money that we can utilize to do especially 4% applications, which have larger gaps but are non-competitive. We need somewhere between 60 to $100 billion to be able to significantly push out enough housing on the front end so that we can at least slow down because every year it goes up, right? Right, right. So there's really two strategies. And I'm now going to lay my hand on the table. There are two, two which I'll pursue, hopefully work with the administration. One is I'll continue to cheerlead for this affordable housing bond that Councilman Lavelle and I believe. I think there's a second way, though. And I've been talking about this privately, but I'll talk about it publicly for the first time and because I intend to work on it, is, and I really appreciate, you know, Deb Grubbs' work on inclusionary zoning, I say it right this time, inclusionary zoning. But I think there's a third option that we've not yet received it with, that I think we should, and I'm going to volunteer my time to think about it and perhaps write something.
Just keep thinking.
We need to incentivize. The bulk of housing is done by private developers and private banks. We need to figure out a way to incentivize private construction and private developers to include affordable housing in their business model so it's profitable for them. You know, if we can figure out a way of tax relief or incentives where it is profitable for them to build affordable housing, imagine where we would be if 10% of every new unit over five units in the city of Pittsburgh had affordable housing in them, somewhere between 10 to 15%, 10 to 15% over the last, what, 10 years in Deb's district alone? Say, would we have me?
Nine thousand, lucky units citywide, so we would have had 900.
We would have had 900, 900 new affordable units. And I think that's, I think the carrot and stick approach where there is a carrot in this case. So I intend to work with both. I intend to work with you, administration. I've been, we're thinking about this really for months and I've done some preliminary work, I just haven't talked about it. But I think that those are my two solutions and I offer them freely. Take out the bond and then let's rehab, rehab some of our incentives so that there is a financial benefit for developers to put affordable housing in their, in their, in their, in their districts, in their development. We know it's possible from Councilman Strasburg's district, the Giant Eagle, right? We know the Giant Eagle Development has affordable, and in their case, they have no incentives, right? They did it with zero incentives. So if they can do it with no incentives, right, other than I think six and eight vouchers maybe, right, with no real incentives, they did it out of goodness of their heart. They're doing, I think, 15% affordable housing. We can, I think, provide a carrot to many private developers, and I think that's the way to go. I'm talking too much because this is the issue I'm passionate about. Not specifically this, I'll vote for this homeless information, but I think we, and we think about social services and wraparound services for them. And then second of all, in terms of affordable housing, I think both the bond and the incentive to private market rate developers to put affordable housing in their units, both of them are solutions I will work with the administration to pursue.
Thank you very much. Anyone else second round? If not, third round, Councilman Wilson?
I just wanted to address something that was said, and I don't, you know, I don't mean to get in an argument here, but I just want to, I think it's good to talk about it. It was said, you know, you mentioned that, and we can have it interrogatory, but that, you know, a lot of people, maybe we could clarify because, you know, from working with outreach workers, my understanding is that most people want to go inside that are outside. And there are challenges that people are going through. And I've seen it firsthand, you know, since my district, you know, has, you know, visible homelessness and people literally be housed, the people have been saying they just don't want to go inside. And so I've seen this AHN Roots Program work where, you know, they have built a team that involves doctors and people that, you know, social services, and they figure out ways to break down the barriers to get people inside. And my understanding is that it's actually a very small percent of individuals that would be the most challenging to get them into a safe space inside. So I just wanted to, you know.
I don't disagree.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, I just, I just want to make the point. I hear a lot of said, it's just like, I hear that line a lot about, you know, or that line kind of said a few different ways about people, you know, that are outside and that's just, that's just how it is. And I think there are real solutions that we can all work towards and break down, you know, the barriers of places that have, you know, a spot inside for them to be. We just need to move, we need to move that ball down the line. And that ball that's going down the line is going to take real leadership because people, and I'm looking for that out there, you know, people that want to be in the room and have that discussion because people are using drugs.
Yep.
And they're not accepted inside.
Yep.
People are, people have mental health issues that even so, you know, you work, you know, my understanding is the people who work with them will be able to get them inside. Everyone has an opportunity, that just so everyone has an opportunity that's outside has an opportunity to be inside. The conversation, the question I love the most is, what would it take, you know, to get you inside? Some people don't want to go to the shelter where there is a bunk-style room. So, you know, my district, there's YMCA, SROs, you know, there's, there's, there's different types of, you know, for instance, in the time of COVID, the county opened a hotel and it was mostly, it was based on the increase in COVID in encampments. And they wanted to make sure that people were safe, people that are outside are safe. That was closed down, you know, and I'm curious to, you know, I'm looking forward to the conversation of what happens in the future, you know, on models like that because talking to the people that were able to get them inside to that, to that hotel, they saw people go inside that would never go inside because there was that, you know, they had some privacy that was dignified. And so I just wanted to, I just want to address that and make those comments and, you know, I'm happy to talk about it.
He said, very quickly, I agree with you 1,000%, maybe I misspoke. What I was really referring to was the need for programming to make them able to come inside. If left up to their own devices because of their issues, simply give them a house or housing without programming, they'll be unsuitable to go inside for a variety of reasons. But if you have social services and professionals who go to them and provide them with the, with the resources to prepare them, that they're able to successfully navigate housing. So we're really talking the same, I just say it the wrong way, but I agree with you 1,000% that they need these services. They can't just, we can't just build houses and say, come in. There needs to be a process that gives them services that they need and clarifications that they need and get barriers away. So when they go inside, they're not a danger to other people and they're not a danger to themselves and they can function fully inside that environment. So we're, I think we're saying the exact same thing.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Carrkill. I believe I saw President Smith.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, when we're talking about homelessness, affordable housing, I feel like, you know, it's all really mixed together. I believe that, I think Councilwoman Gross said it best, there's a gap, okay? Whereas when we talk about Allegheny Health Network, which I'm a big believer in, Councilman Wilson and I have worked closely with Dan Pelco and the county executive and talking about different things we can do there. And Reverend Burgess, you're absolutely right. You know, we need a program once we find shelter, shelter a house. First step, though, is filling that gap with housing. And we have taken that step as counsel, which I'm very proud to have co-sponsored, to say we need to fill this gap. Many different ways about that, when you talk about a 60 million or so dollar bond over the long term. I think, as Councilwoman Gross says, there's a lot of different pieces to the puzzle. And as we move along and as we learn more, we're finding different avenues, different ways, whether it's transferring this money, getting it on the streets right away. I'm not necessarily for taking out a $60 million bond at this point, but I do feel we have to identify, we have to find the funds. This gentleman over here, you know, who says he has 120 beds, that's the people we need to be talking to right now.
That gentleman's my cousin.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. No. Yeah, well, why don't you come to, if I may call him? I'd like to ask him a few questions. Is that okay?
That's your prerogative.
Yes, please. Come on up to the microphone, please, to the podium. So, you know, we have shelters. We all agree, I think, at this point, this is not the best way to get people off of the street and back into a, you know, normal pattern of life. What we lack is the housing that, and I know that the administration is looking at models. I know that we talk, you know, frequently about it here, but the bottom line is we don't have it yet. And as Councilman Wilson had pointed out, I think that we can get them off the streets if we had a place for them to go. Not a shelter, not a 24-hour stay there, but a place where, you know, they can actually rehab. With that comes, as Councilwoman Burgess pointed out, services. We need social services. We need people, you know, whether it's a drug affliction, whether it's mental illness, we need people working with them so they can re-acclimate into society. That, of course, is going to cost money. But first and foremost, I feel we need to fill that gap of housing. And I'm sorry, sir, I can't remember your name.
Tim Seitz.
Tim Seitz, okay. Do you get all that good Lebanese food from the?
I need to get to go up.
So, so Tim, I just want to ask you, this is a place you own.
It's a place that was brought to me by someone that I do business with that helped me get my building. It's an available building right now. It's right on the border in McKees Rocks. It's on Chertier's Avenue. It's a 102-unit, it used to be an old folks' home. There's a charge on site, there's a secure medical facility on site, there's an auditorium on site. There's enough room to house and facilitate even the programs Mr. Burgess was talking about, whether it be a detox facility or a detox wing. There's plenty of room within this property to set up multiple layers. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And is this facility in good condition where it could be used right away? Is there an investment that needs to be done to get it up to par where people can actually live there?
This facility is turnkey. When I say turnkey, it could be moved into tomorrow.
Right, right. And who owns it?
Right now, I apologize, I don't have the information with me. I have the email, the memorandum.
But you feel you have the right to say you can open this facility? If the city were to find money to make these 120, we'll say temporary homes available, you have the authority to say, or you'll get us in touch with somebody, or where is that lying?
Yes, absolutely. I'm listening to, you know, just listening and everything and, you know, I don't, look, I don't know if any of you know what it's like to be dope sick and have zero desperation and just feel like life is, you know, there's nothing left. You know, I do. So like speaking from experience, you know, a lot of those homeless people, they're afraid to make that move because they feel like they're going to be sick. They're afraid that they're not going to get the help that they need when they go in. You know, if you could give them somewhere where they can feel safe and be able to step in and know that they'll have medical care, that they can help detox and come off, you know, and get right.
So we've been talking about this for weeks and weeks, and here it is, falls right in our lap this morning, as far as I'm concerned. You know, if, if this gentleman has a facility that we can look at and move people in immediately and get 120 of our estimated 500 homeless off the street and start getting them help right away with social services and with the proper tools that we can re-acclimate them into society.
I'm listening, and again, I apologize, guys, I'm so ignorant to all this. I don't understand the politics and I don't, but I'm listening to like 60 million and 2 million and all these millions. This building's available to me for $2 million.
Well, that's, that's my point. We're talking about buying, not we, anybody in general, but, you know, you can go around the nation. We're talking about buying hotels, you're talking about building, you're talking about mini houses, we're talking about all of that. What we have focused, I think what Councilwoman Gross has identified, is there's a gap. We need, as Councilman Wilson says, these people, folks probably want to find a place to live. They want to get better. We hope they want to get better. We have to provide the services and we all know that's, you know, could be a long process, up to two years, to get somebody back where they can self-sustain themselves. But the lack of the gap housing that we don't have right now, that we can put them somewhere, I feel this gentleman come and said, here, I have it. So, you know, $2 million, that's a drop in the bucket as to what we are going to end up, you know, financing.
Again, I don't understand how this works, but that would, that's my thoughts too. Like, look at what they spend on everything else.
Right, right. Well, I want to thank you for being here. That's all the questions I have for you unless, we'll leave them there if anybody else has any questions for him. Anyone else want to?
No, I want him to sit down.
Okay, you can, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome. So, so, you know, when we, we talk about, you know, homelessness and we talk about how to get people off of the street, I believe strongly in Allegheny Health Network and what they do identifying, I believe Dan Pelco can go out and say, this person's ready, we can get them in a house tomorrow and start the rehab process. And this gentleman comes in here and says, you know, we have 120 beds, a facility on six acres of ground, I want to see it, you know, and I want to think, and I think to myself, well, if we're going to invest money into anything, this is an immediate thing that we could put our finances into and say, hey, we just took 100 people off the streets. And I'm sure we could fill that facility tomorrow of those 500 people. So that's it for me now. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President.
Thanks. I don't want to belabor this, I know that we have so many other bills, but I just want to say that I think when we're talking about housing, we've got to ask what we're doing with Housing Authority, what we're doing with the funding that they receive, what we're doing with the Housing Opportunity Fund and the funding that we receive there. And we also, we have the ARPA funds, which we did allocate some to Richard Snipe and his department where they're supposed to be remodeling or renovating homes. So I think we need to look at all those funds collectively and try to figure out a way that we can put them towards the efforts that we really want. But I want to thank Tim for coming down because Tim is my cousin and I'm thankful that you shared your story. I know it's a painful one. I know that, so I don't want to, I don't want to put you in that, in that situation, but thank you for sharing that story. But I think that it's imperative that whatever we do, we keep talking about the wraparound services and making sure that we're getting, you know, social services into people that really need help. But that's not the only thing they need. We need to make sure they have the tools and a place to put somebody if they, if they choose to, to take a house or to get off the street and, or to go into service and into some kind of counseling. And I think if we don't have the housing available to us, that's the priority right now. So I think that for us, we want to make sure that we're helping people like Tim, who really, I'm really proud of you and how you turned your life around. I mean, seven years, you've done an amazing job. You own your own business. His uncle is Chuck Betters. So if anybody, if anybody had money to help somebody, if money were the answer, that he would have been helped a long time ago. The problem is that he needed to get the services first. And so he, he was able to get that and able to turn his life around. So I just want to say how proud I am of you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Still on third round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to thank all the other members for being so engaged and talking about how we can move more quickly on addressing this lack of transitional housing in homelessness. Again, after Councilwoman Smith and I did many weeks of briefings with the administration, what we really heard was that from, from people on the streets, from people who, from Roots, from people at OCHS, in our own city departments, that the shelter beds are really not good enough. from people at OCHS, in our own city departments, that the shelter beds are really not good enough. And we're grateful to the providers of the shelter beds because it was better than being out in the cold in the streets, for sure. But that we need years to work on permanent housing and that we've heard, as Councilwoman Wilson pointed out, from, from the EHN outreach workers, that they believe they've reached every single person and put them in a waiting list for housing, but there is no permanent housing. Right, so there's no permanent housing to put people in. Plus, they need these services that everyone has so eloquently described. So, there's a gap in between the overnight shelter beds that lack service and actually are not housing. And the, we're working on creating permanent housing. Each, each rent, each apartment these days, it used to be, we said, costs about $250,000 to build, but with COVID and commodity chains and limited labor supply, I'm hearing it's up to $400,000. That adds up to a lot of money, having had many, many private market luxury rate apartments built in my district in the last eight years. I, you know, those projects take three years, right? And so, that's not helping people in the next three months. It's not helping people in the next six months. So, this gap is what we need to address. I was just going to ask Mr. Chair to, if we, I think we're all comfortable now, after this long discussion for sure, that has been wide-ranging on voting bill 650. But there are additional bills, the bill that Councilwoman Smith and I co-sponsored to move resources to look at transitional housing and immediate responses to homelessness, perhaps we should read next, is bill 677, because we just had the discussion, basically. And we're going to motion to hold 677 later in the Finance Committee. And then I have just, we figured out, thank you to Director Pollak and Mr. Randall, that the, Russell, that the attendant bill to 650 that we've been discussing is under land use and is 660. So, we may want to read that one as well. But I'd be happy to just skip to 677 after we vote this one in motion to hold so we can continue these discussions while we work with the administration. Thank you for, to them for their support.
Thank you. Any, well, we're still on 650, any further discussion? If not, I'll simply add my two cent related to the bond discussion.
That's the hard part of cheering, you have to wait for the last minute.
Yes, you do. And I'll be brief, because I believe we can do the bond right now. As some of you all may or may not recall, pre-pandemic, we were in conversations with the banking industry about could we actually, as a city, take out the bond? At that time, we could not demonstrate that we'd actually be able to expend all the dollars necessary in the appropriate amount of time to do it. Since then, we've had further conversations and we've actually been able to demonstrate, one, we can spend it, because we've been able to prove it with the URA and the HOF. Two, we're able to demonstrate the backlog of projects and deals and housing that's necessary. And so, there's, we can absolutely demonstrate that if we did the bond, we could take it out now. The second piece to this is, the city itself doesn't necessarily have to be the one to take out the bond. The URA could actually take out the bond because we could, we could put Housing Opportunity Fund dollars as one way to pay off the bond as a dedicated source of revenue. We'd have to extend the HOF for a period of years. We'd have to take a percentage of it, which I will argue that, and we were going to have to approve their new budget coming up, I would argue we're spending too much HOF money despite the social service needs, we're spending too much of it on social services. We could reduce that amount to then dedicate it to paying off a bond that the URA could take out, and then we could actually get the 60, 70, 100 million dollars upfront right now to go to work on this backlog of housing and projects that is necessary. So, I'll continue also arguing and lobbying to do this, and I believe we can do it absolutely right now, and it'd be, I don't want to say easy, but there's a streamlined way to actually get it done. And PNC is ready to do it, I've spoken with them. Councilman?
No, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, again, I feel like I'm getting things, you know, two, two different subjects, whether it's homelessness and affordable housing. When you say a bond, you're talking about affordable housing, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you're talking about building units, a unit for affordable housing.
Building and rehab, but yes.
You're talking about a bond over, how many years?
15, 20.
15, 20 years, done through the URA? Because it's the best vehicle.
In my conversations, the city could, can take out a bond, but in my most recent conversations, I believe the easiest way to do it would be, would be through the URA. Because that's where we send our HOF dollars, and we could simply take a portion of those dollars and dedicate it to paying off the actual bond.
Yeah.
Then we need more people on the URA from city council.
Well, we'll address that in a little bit. But, so, so many, I agree with that, though. So, so, as we talk about a bond, I'm never one to accrue debt. A bond is debt, still, you know, I mean, I know that generations are going to benefit from it, and that's the purpose, and that's how we, the logic of having a bond is that generations after us are going to be benefiting from this purchase. But I just didn't want to sound unsupportive of your idea, okay? There's many pieces here, and, you know, I guess I was just kind of getting everything intermixed with homeless, you know, getting the homeless off the street and building affordable housing. We're talking strictly affordable housing, $60 million or so to build.
A portion of which could be used to adjust the homeless population.
Okay, right, sure.
And so, because, because.
Confuse me more. No, I'm just, I, I get it. I just wanted to clarify, when you're talking bond, that that was really geared towards affordable housing. And yes, everything, again, I feel like it's all kind of intermixed, and we could, you know, allocate and somehow make that work towards the homeless situation, too. That's, that's all.
And just for clarity, because when I say affordable housing, at this point, my definition has really expanded, to be affordable for you at whatever cost you can actually afford. Because there are people who are living in million-dollar condos, as Councilwoman Gross will speak about, those condos were made affordable to them through various subsidies that that developer got. So, they wouldn't be in the million-dollar condo if not for taxpayer subsidies. So, if we can subsidize the million-dollar condo, then we can also help the homeless person out through affordable housing, at whatever means you have.
And as Councilwoman Burgess was saying earlier, if we can make it affordable, not a, oh, boy, we're going to make you do this to the developers, we're going to force you to put the 10% in. If we can make it affordable through subsidies, like they do for the million-dollar places, that is the golden ticket. If, if a developer can look at it and it could be as profitable or, you know, along the same profit lines as the million-dollar penthouses, you know, if we find that formula, it's one to keep and it's one that we should practice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 650 has received an affirmative recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Russell, for spending quality time with us today. With that, at the request of Councilwoman Gross and our president, we'll skip, go to the page four and read bill 677. It's at the very bottom.
Bill 677, resolution authorizing the mayor, the Office of Management and Budget, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Finance, the Department of Innovation and Performance, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Safety, and the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to temporarily address the public health emergency of homelessness in the City of Pittsburgh and to provide for policies and programs to address the lack of affordable housing and their consequent contribution to chronic homelessness as directed herein until more permanent solutions can be implemented.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, again, I want to thank council members for so much discussion, both on camera today, last week, and, and off-camera and your phone calls and support, as we try to figure out what it is we haven't tried yet, right? We need to try things, new things, things that other cities are doing, trying, working with the administration, who has been working with us now for six weeks and briefing us and really digging in on kind of what, what are the resources we've deployed so far? How well are they working and where are the gaps? So, we're just going to motion to hold this today so that we can, again, work with the administration and any members who have ideas and suggestions, and we'll bring this paper back as soon as we can so we can all get started.
Second.
I didn't technically make the motion, so I thought Ms. Kailas Smith might.
No, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so, motion to hold for, how many weeks do we want to hold it for? Two.
Let's do two at a time.
We'll do two, we'll start with two, since Madam President. Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. And then what is the other bill that Mr. Russell's here for? 660. And we'll skip to page 12 for bill 660.
Bill 660, resolution further amending resolution number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reallocate Community Development Block Grant Cares Act, Funding and Authorizing Subsequent Agreement or Agreements."
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, thank you. So, that will take us back to page three to bill 651.
Bill 651, resolution further amending resolution 647 of 2020, effective December 23 of 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing park reconstruction by $245,230 and increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $245,230."
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, bill 652.
Bill 652, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority to provide for the leasing of four pumper trucks at a cost not to exceed $3,879,860.74 over seven years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second with discussion.
Discussion, Council President?
Yes, can we have, are you here, Chief, to talk about this? You're not.
He can back me up if I need it, right?
You won't be happy when I'm done. That's good. Hi, I just wanted to know, I know that there was a lot of concern about these, this order, this purchase, there were stories about it on the, in the media about the purchase. And I, it's my understanding, after talking to Chief Frank, that some of it has been corrected. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, that original purchase was canceled, and our money returned for the prepayment. We went through, Chief Kukila and Chief Jones, they put together an entire working group who very, very thoroughly went through all the specifications, probably about a 200-page document that they put together, and we went out for RFP and went through an evaluation process, we selected dispenser fire trucks, and where they, one of the requirements of the RFP was to offer a leasing option. We worked with the capital team to determine lease or buy, and the decision came that the best thing for the Fire Bureau would be, these, these vehicles, just so you all know, are, for the day we order them, are 550 days to build. So, we are not even going to get these trucks until 2024.
So, there was an RFP?
Yes.
Someone responded, how many responses did you get to the RFP?
One.
Just one. Was that because of the lease requirement in there?
No, there was, some of the, some of the companies could not meet our spec due to the cab size. There were other issues of they could not get the poly wheel wells that we wanted. Another company just got a big order from Nashville and just said, we don't want to bid, we got this big order, we don't need it. So, there were multiple reasons why Spencer was the only one that responded.
So, I'm hesitant to vote on this because there was so much controversy around it. So, I want to know, do you feel that this process was now legally vetted? It's a proper, council could vote on it without any concern?
Absolutely, absolutely. We had a pre-bid meeting, there were seven vendors that came, you know, we had a lot of Q and A.
Seven vendors that came, but only one that responded?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that council is not getting ourselves into something that we don't want to be into. That's it, I'm good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, bill 653.
Bill number 653, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Natasha Bruce and her attorneys, Jack Goodrich and Associates, PC, in the amount of $230,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Needs held for executive session.
Oh, sorry, read it wrong. Held for executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held, bill 654.
Bill 654, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Leonard Scott Weiss in the amount of $9,226.64 in settlement of a claim for damage to the residence and sidewalk at 5847 Soulway Street from a failed tree, city tree on July 7, 2021.
Second. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, bill 655.
Bill 655, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of O'Brien Coleman and Wright LLC in the amount of $450,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation, including attorney's fees and costs filed in the US District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to hold for second session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held, bill 665.
Bill 665, resolution transferring a total of $15,000 within the 2022 operating budget from city council to the office of the city clerk for the purpose of professional development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. There are no transfers, so we need a motion to approve the P cards.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by President Smith. New papers, bill 629.
Bill 629, resolution establishing the healthy and safe Pittsburgh 2030 Initiative and Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, I'll defer to, this is your legislation, right? I'll defer to Councilman Burgess.
I have, I think, I've talked to most members about this. I began to say something yesterday that.
You think we worry.
That I said something yesterday that really have been, has arrested my attention for the last year or so, is that the preamble to the Home Rule Charter says, "A responsible city is one which seeks to ensure that all of its citizens' needs are met, whether from public or private, city, county, state, or national sources. A responsible city is one which expects aggressive action." This is the part that I emphasized, they expresses, expects aggressive action from its officials toward the achievement of dignified housing, useful employment, pure air and water, efficient transportation, excellent education, health, safety, recreation, and culture, and other conditions conducive to, to human growth. That word responsible city was not a, is not a, is not a phrase that was used accidentally. It's a technical term that really talks about responsible government. And that goes way back to Westminster and that whole parliamentary system of government. But what it really means for us is a government that's accountable to the citizens. At the end of the day, we are accountable to the citizens of Pittsburgh. That is our, our charge. I think the pandemic has showed us that our system is fragile, and I'm proud to be a part of this council. We have done, we have moved for traditionally letting other people provide resources to our communities and our citizens, and we have, during my, my span, I've been proud to be part of a council that has changed that, that paradigm. We decided to invest in children, and so we increased the, the Summer Youth Employment Program so that every single child who applies is covered. We decided to invest in families, and that's why we created the Housing Opportunity Fund. And most recently, we, as a council, decided to invest in communities. And. decided to invest in communities, and we create the Stop the Violence Fund. And so, you know, this council has been moving to invest in citizens and invest directly in the community organizations for the benefit of our citizens. Uh, COVID has showed us, though, with so many businesses closed and so many organizations struggling, that we have to do even more. And so, the Healthy and Safe Pittsburgh Initiative, um, is to strengthen the health, safety, and well-being of citizens and communities. That's what the CDC talks about. The Healthy and Safe Pittsburgh Initiative goes beyond the traditional limited view of wellness. Instead of focusing on the things needed to create a strong, resilient communities, a major part of which is increasing capacity for community-based organizations, residence groups, and citizens. The Healthy and Safe Pittsburgh Initiative, um, uh, will implement programs, practices, and policies to improve the social determinants of health. That means more than just the health, um, in the traditional sense, but broaden that. Um, this, health, economic development, education, social and community context, neighborhood, and building environments. Uh, that's housing, that's, um, schools, that's after-school programs. So that, it changes the argument, right? I'm suggesting that everything we do in the city, we should look at the health and wellness of our residents, right? If a bridge falls down, that's not safe and healthy, um, for our residents. If kids are not in healthy after-school programs, that's not good for our kids, our residents. If we're not advocating, um, um, for public safety to act in a responsible way, that's also not good for the health and safety. We want to, you know, let, we want to empower, um, our entire city. And so that's what this is. I won't go through all the things. I have talked to the mayor's office. They are supportive and will work with me collaboratively to implement this. Um, it is not, um, by itself or one-off. It's, um, consistent with the Healthy People 230 Initiative of the United Nations and the 230 Agenda for Stay, Sustainable Development. The county, I think, has a safe community, um, um, model that's also consistent with. But it's us working together with all, as I think the council president said it more eloquently than I am, about the homeless issue. We have to now do this in collaboration, but we must lead, right? In collaboration with the county, in collaboration with the state. As a city, we must lead these efforts because our residents count on us. We're accountable. If, if, if they don't have the resources they need, we're the one that, in which they blame. And so, um, um, I'm grateful for the opportunity to, to submit this. But I do think, and it's, uh, the, the, the other thing is, it will sun, it was sunset in 2030 along, so it's consistent with the, the other state, national, and federal model, and we can reevaluate it then. And then the second thing it calls for is an advisory group of council, so that this initiative is not done in isolation, that we bring back. I had the privilege of talking to, um, the former head of, um, of...
DHS.
Of DHS, um, Mr. Menelken. I, I think, you know, he's a rare treasure. I think people like that are still around and can help us to, to, to run this efficiently. So, that's the legislation. And I, uh, many of you probably have, 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 have vocalized your support. And I think we can use this to push our city forward. Thank you very much.
Are we voting for this today, or are you holding it?
I, I'm ready to vote for it today. It's, it's, I think we can do it.
Uh, Councilman Wilson?
All right, thanks. I'm happy, happy to have interrogative too, if it comes up. I feel like that's what most of my comments are. It's like, hey, I might talk about it. Um, so, thank you for, uh, putting this together. You know, how will this align with the Office of Community Health and Safety? Because, you know, in the line, you know, I think we risk, I mean, the title of the bill was, I think it puts us at risk of talking about a parallel effort that's happening.
Okay, so I've talked to Lord Drogarsky about this in writing of the bill. With the, a couple of things, I think. In my opinion, and I think the administration, I've been, I said this when we created it, that the Office of Health and Safety, Health and, Office of Health and...
Office of Community Health and Safety.
Community Health and Safety, really should be in the Public Safety Department and be two parallels offices. But what they do is emergency crisis management stuff. They are in the, they are in the communities helping homeless. They are in the communities doing, uh, drug rehabilitation. They are in the communities partnering with the police to do spec programs, uh, prevention programs. Um, they're, they're doing direct things. This is not that. This is more of a policy perspective of, of creating, um, of putting resources in community-based organizations to give them resiliency, to plan policies, to plan programs, to help them write grants. It is not, is not at all, um, one-on-one crisis management at all. So it's doing something completely different that no one else in the city is doing. There is, there is no group that I know of in the city of Pittsburgh that's providing technical, um, resources or capacity building to community-based organizations or to individual citizens, or bringing together groups of people, um, to say, "Let's talk about what we can collaborate on to make our community safer, or how can residence groups work together." So it's not, and again, Laura and I talked about this in the writing of it. I was very careful. It in no way, it in no way conflicts with the work she does.
Okay, yeah, it's just when I read the title, I'm...
Yeah, it's just the title of it, but it's not, it's, it is not, it is not...
I was like wondering if we could switch up the title to reflect, like, health and, health and safe is...
With its...
Like, when I hear you talk about the building capacity with the, you know, community groups, it's just, I don't think of health and safe.
So this differently. Health and safe is the overall goal of what we want. We want the communities to be healthy and safe. And, and, and I, I got the title really from the CDC. That's the three things it says. Uh, that, that's the goal of, of health. And I, and they define it as health, safety, and well-being. We want every citizen in every community to be healthy, safe, and good well-being. I'm not opposed to change it, but it's, I think it's, my opinion, is an overarching theme that's consistent with the best practices of the state and the federal and the, in the United Nations. And so, uh, it's had many, you know, we thought of many titles before. It was the one that we thought makes the most sense. But I'm willing to, to talk about that between now and Tuesday if, 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 you know, see what makes sense.
Okay. President Smith?
So I thought we were hoarding for a post-agenda public hearing. So I'll abstain today until I have a chance to talk to you a little bit more in-depth about it, because I really would like to know not only how it affects, um, other efforts in the city, I want to know how it affects us and our counseling and governing and things that we're supposed to be elected to do on our own, and represent the area. So I just want to know how it affects all that. Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Abstain?
Abstain.
To abstentions? Four in favor, affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Bill 664.
Bill, excuse me, Bill 664, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Southside Marina in the Amount of $9,708 for the Design and Installation of a Roof for Protection of the Fire Boat When Moored at the Marina.
Motion to approve, need discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
Yes. Um, real quickly, I just had a conversation with, uh, Chief Jones and, and Ralph Sakora. Um, I initially was thinking, oh, this is so, um, you know, we could keep the boat out through all seasons. However, this is just a shelter for the boat. It's a very expensive boat, you know, and it's always out in the elements while it's, you know, running, I think, eight months a year, I guess, or so. Um, I'm supportive of it.
So it's my committee, so can I have the...
I know, I know. I was, I was waiting for you to be, sure, you go ahead, Madam President.
Can we just have the chief come to the table, that's all. Since he's here. To the table, you can come to the table.
I'm like, why is it your committee?
For a week, right?
She wasn't, somebody had to.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Thank you, do, thank you, Councilman, go ahead.
No, no, okay, so, so Chief, would you, um, just explain for the members as to, um, you know, what this shelter, the purpose of it?
Uh, this is just a basic shelter. Kind of like a carport.
Right.
And just to protect it from, uh, UV rays and things like that.
Right. And can I ask you how old the boat is now?
Chief, sorry, will you turn your mic on? Thank you.
Uh, I think it's about four years old now.
Okay, so it's fairly new. I mean, when we're talking about boats. Um, the cost of that boat, I can't remember exactly.
It was a little over a half million dollars.
Half a million dollars. So this really is to protect our half a million dollar investment, um, throughout the seasons that we have it on the water.
That's correct.
Because I know water from being a roofing contractor. Nothing damages, doesn't matter if it's a boat, doesn't matter if it's a house, nothing's more damaging than water, uh, hitting it. Not to say it still won't get wet. It is a, it is a boat.
The UV rays and things like that, that will damage our electronics and the interior. So, uh, this is something that's going to help it last.
Right, and the shelter will be, was, is it location here?
It's going to be at the Southside Marina.
At the Southside Marina, okay. Um, it won't enable us to leave it there year-round. Still going to need to be pulled, um, when inclement weather comes.
Correct.
Okay, that's it for me. Um, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Could you just tell me how many times the boat's actually been in service, like, and used to, you know, put out a fire, to respond to a fire? Could you tell us, do you know how many times? Is it often? Is it once in a while?
Uh, it's not the, what, the most busiest unit I have, but we responded to everything from jumpers. We've actually, uh, gone out of the city to assist, like, the major fire they had, uh, last year at Neville Island. Uh, it is a regional asset as, that we use it for.
So maybe the county should pitch in for that too, then? But, okay.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, uh, so, uh, local emergencies, small-scale emergencies, fortunately, we don't have a lot of, uh, large disasters on the water, but, uh, we need to be prepared. Uh, the ones that we will have will be, uh, high-risk incidents, no doubt, and, uh, so this is a valuable asset for us.
So, uh, one other thing I want to ask, aside from the boat, the firehouse, that, the, um, it's a trailer for kids, like, to, how to escape a fire or whatever?
Yeah, that's out of service right now.
That's out of service too. So what, do you need to have that back in service, do you know?
A new one.
A new one. So I hope that that's something that you're looking for, because I know how many times it's been out helping kids across the...
Well, we have a very robust program right now. We have Master Firefighter Lisa Epps been leading the charges, our pub ed specialist. Uh, that is something that is on the list, but it's not at the top of the list for her, uh, as far as priorities go.
So I wonder if we can get some, do you know what the cost of that? I wonder if we can get someone to donate something towards that.
I do not have any idea what one of those costs, brand new.
But it really is really important, and maybe that's something Children's Hospital or, you know, there's, you know, s- some of the funds that they have, nonprofits that have so many, um, foundations with the universities and others. Maybe that's something they could pitch in for. I mean, one or two of those across the city are really needed, I think. Thank you. Thank you, that's all I want to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Hi, Chief. I just want to ask what the capabilities of the fireboat are.
I'm sorry?
I just want to ask what the capabilities of the, of the fireboat are.
Fireboat has a, uh, unique, uh, and very sophisticated electronics suite for not only, uh, sonar, but side, down sonar, but also side-scanning sonar. Uh, it has radar capabilities. It is capable of pumping about 4,000 gallons per minute, uh, to supply, uh, fire units that are on land. So it enables us to use our three rivers as an additional water source. Uh, just to put that in perspective, 4,000 gallons per minute is the equivalent of two very, very good hydrants. Uh, you probably have a hard time finding a hydrant capable of putting out 2,000 gallons per minute at one.
For alarm.
It is for high-risk, uh, low-frequency incidents. If we have, uh, major derailment along the, the river, uh, where our rail lines go, and we need, uh, massive amounts of water, it can provide us that. It could probably provide us water, uh, into the, off, from the river, probably two, uh, to four blocks, maybe, depending on the situation there. Uh, it is a very sophisticated and, uh, piece of equipment. And, you know, being, uh, the second-largest inland port in the country and not to have any fire suppression capabilities, that is, uh, that's a significant deficit that we had. And this helps, uh, fill in that gap.
All right, thank you for going over those significant capabilities. I just want to learn more about it.
Okay.
It was purchased before. I go on, I keep hearing about it, so I was always curious about its capabilities. Thanks.
Yeah, go away.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? Councilman McGraw?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, when we discussed this before, I remember you mentioning, I didn't hear you say it this time, but also with the fire suppression capacity and being able to draw river water to add to, um, any crises, it was especially since we were kind of building up our river fronts, right? And so when you're talking about the residential facilities on the river's edge and the buildings down there, it would be able to provide additional size, fire suppression.
Yeah, like I said, it would be able to give us an additional two hydrants, two very good hydrants, as I previously stated, so.
You can get right ever to where you need.
Yeah, so long as we're close enough to the water.
So you've got both fires, you know, kind of land side and waterside.
Yes.
Thank you.
You, second round, Councilman Corkhill?
Okay, so, um, you just answered one of my questions I had, uh, earlier into what Councilwoman McGraw was just saying, the distance capability. Um, we, we do have, say, for instance, a casino. You said two to four blocks. What are we talking feet-wise?
Uh, it depends. There's so many variables involved with that when the pumping, uh, elevation loss, friction loss.
Right.
Uh, so I, I really couldn't tell you that, but the casino is close enough where we'll be, it's, it's good to go.
Good, good. And thankfully, we haven't had to use it, you know.
No.
I think, um, one of the things people don't realize, and I haven't seen it, it may speak to the safe boaters and the abundant boaters and the educated boaters that we have. Um, very often in other cities, um, I see, uh, fires among, among passenger boats, um, you know, which you think on the water, oh, boy, how could that happen? Well, it happens, and a boat goes up just like a old rickety wooden house, correct?
Especially the fiberglass ones, they burn like crazy when they get loose. So during our, our recreational events on the river, uh, Kenny Chesney Concert, Fourth of July Celebration, things like that, where people, uh, even right now, I guess, getting ready for tomorrow's backyard brawl, there have been people docking, and they continue to dock out. And then, of course, they're cooking out, and the alcohol's flowing, and, uh, it's, you know, nothing could go wrong there, right? But, uh, we're ready for those type of the, events. And those are relatively rare that we have those. Most of the time, people are very careful with that. So, uh, we've had a couple small recreational boat fires.
Right.
Uh, but nothing major.
Right. And you also said sonar, meaning if we're looking for, um, a drowning victim, you have that capability.
Yes.
And you work in conjunction with the paramedics, I guess, with that.
Yes, well, we've, uh...
Because there's the paramedics who are the divers.
Uh, they're the same. The, uh, River Rescue is, consists of EMS with the paramedics and the police. Now, their new boat also has side-scanning sonar, but, uh, a family looking for a loved one that's lost. You know, you want to put as many resources on that as you possibly can. So, we will work in conjunction with them. Uh, they could do one side of the river. We can do the other, and...
Right, right. So we have two capable boats with sonar. One that works with emergency medical services, one that works strictly with the fire department. Um, and just to clarify, the, um, the water that we have to use or we would use from the, uh, fire boat is, of course, drawn straight from the river.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, so it's more than just putting out fires. Um, we don't want to use it, because we don't want to have to use it for that. But it's searching for victims. It's aiding, uh, people who are in distress on their boat, and, you know, could be used for a multiple amount of...
Especially one of the largest concerns, as I said, we are, we move more product through the city of Pittsburgh on our rivers than Baltimore, which is an international sea going port. Uh, all kinds of hazardous materials and everything else, industrial materials come on our rivers, and we need to be ready for that.
Right, right. Okay, and, uh, one final thing I wanted to say about Chief Jones here, you know, first of all, I have full confidence in, in what you do at the department. Uh, fellow from my district pulled me over, and he said, "You know what?" He said, "I had a flat tire on McNeely Road," which I know you live in the district, and I know you travel that often. Um, pulled over on his way to work and helped and assisted, uh, the, the, this, this man changing his tire. Did you not? Does he remember that?
That wasn't me. I wish I could take credit for that one, though.
Blown out of proportion now. Okay. All right, good enough. I retract that. All right, but I'm sure you would have.
I would have done, offered some assistance, but, um...
Good deal, Chief. That's it for me.
Getting in my age now, breaking bolts on a tire love would be a challenge, so.
Uh, just a fable, I guess.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for being here, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, that moves us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first paper is Bill 630.
Bill 630, Resolution Amending Resolution 563, effective September 16th, 2019, entitled authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Bucartorn Architects for architectural and engineering design services related to the renovation of the former Thaddeus Stevens School for use by the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Special Deployment Division for the not to exceed amount of $973,595.22 by amending the title of the resolution and increasing the allocation for the not to exceed amount of $1,412,328.27, an increase of $438,733.05.
Motion to approve, Anthony. Councilman Coghill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Second.
I wasn't gonna let him go.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the administration, um Councilman Coghill as well, uh for continuing with this effort uh for the, this is gonna be a community center. It's also gonna be where we keep our archives for the City of Pittsburgh and a small section, section will be used for District Two um nonprofits, organizations, and um possibly a little museum for District Two. It's a big building, it's 67,000 square feet. Um, so I want to thank the administration for continuing with this. It's really important to the community, so thank you.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to clarify the fable of Chief Jones, you know, coming to the rescue. My chief of staff Blake is listening in and he sent me a message. And this is where I got it from. I guess, uh, you know, I kind of got it mixed up. He said, he helped me years ago when my car battery died on Pioneer. This was like a decade ago, so. Just, so he did. He came to the aid.
All right. Any further discussion?
And it was in front of Thaddeus Stevens School.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 631.
Bill 631, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $349,557 for the purchase of a new recycling truck, nine new recycling dumpsters, and to support public education.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 632.
Bill 632, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Public Works and Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an easement with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent easement for veget- vegetation management on city-owned property adjacent to John Care Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 633.
Bill 633, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multi- multi-module transportation fund for the Davis Avenue pedestrian bridge project and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $2,500,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 634.
Bill 634, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multi-module transportation fund for the Homewood sidewalks improvement project and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,921,005.73.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, um, I've often said, you know, I wish we could finance and take care of our sidewalks and our sidewalks. And for me, you know, when I drive through Dormont and Mount Lebanon, you know, they have beautiful sidewalks. They take care of them. Uh, it's not the property owner responsibility. I realize we're a big city. We have many more miles and, you know, cost millions and millions of dollars. So I guess my question is, this grant funding that we're applying for, um, have we done that in the past? Is this the first I've seen of some grant funding to repair and rehabilitate sidewalks? Is there anybody here to speak to that?
So we've, we've done streetscapes funding before.
Yeah, and I had Brookline Boulevard and it was part of a bigger, larger project, but this seems to be geared just towards the sidewalks? Or is it a bigger project?
Who do you ask? Do you want me to answer?
Who's there? There's uh, there's Jeff.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, I guess this is the first time we've ever applied just strictly sidewalks. Uh, majority of the projects we strive for is a street, it's a uh like a streetscape project like you were saying before. Uh, like for Brookline Boulevard, we do the street and we also do sidewalks. This one is just for the sidewalks.
So Jeff, are there lucrative grants out there? Abundant amount of uh grants out there where we could, you know, a- and why did we pick this specific neighborhood? I was wondering. Um, can you answer both those for me, please?
Sure. There's no other water grants unfortunately for sidewalks. Uh, but when there is one available, we, we have been applying. Pretty successful. Um, so that's what this resolution is, just to apply for the grants. Um, I believe this one came out of the Homewood study that we did a couple of years ago and it was able to uh give us a uh, a uh, a direct corridor grip sidewalks of uh where they're gonna be located after we were going for replacement. So this came out of the study that we did.
Okay, and um the $2,500,000, how many feet of sidewalk does that replace?
Um, I don't have a direct how many feet, but I have a couple of streets. It's gonna be Upland Streets, uh Kendron Street, North Lang, and North Murlock. I don't have exactly the, how many uh feet that will be.
Okay, is this, is this all focused and centered around the business district?
Um, this, yes.
Okay.
And, and also the playground.
Right. I would love to see, uh, you know, grant for my uh Carrick and Beachview in specific. Uh, Brookline was done part of as a, as a bigger project. And uh, again, this is the first time I've heard of any funds being available that we could um solicit for strictly sidewalks. So I would encourage to find more of them, at least for the main boulevards, you know, as, as what I'm really talking about to begin with. I know it's not realistic to take care of every broken sidewalk throughout our city uh streets, but, okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. President Smith?
I just want to say, I think we all have that same issue and Councilwoman Gross has really been leading the charge in a lot of areas uh involving the sidewalks and even looking at um recyc- yeah, yeah. So there was all sorts of things that, you know, we were looking at. I think it's um, I, I do think that we need to take care. We're hearing that our people that are disabled are not able to navigate these sidewalks the way they are. And we keep saying it's the responsibility of the homeowner. Then we say we can't find the homeowner and, you know, there's just a whole big vicious cycle. And I think we really have to take on this project in some way. Even if we just do so many every year, just we could do paving, we have to do something. Doing nothing is not working for a disabled community.
Um, let me see, this is uh Director, uh Director Scaligan. I just had a question um to, to kind of focus this, this conversation. Or really just to, just so I get on a better understanding of this. So this one's a grant, but we have a critical sidewalk program.
That's correct. This is to apply for a grant.
Okay, this is apply for a grant. Um, how much funding is in the, the critical sidewalk program?
Um, I'll have to look exactly. Um, I believe it's like around a million dollar worth, but I can take a look.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, a million?
About a million dollars, yeah.
Five million.
Five million. Okay, I just wanted to understand as we move into the budget season. Thanks.
Just for your edification, I know Domi did submit for additional resources to be put into this critical sidewalk repair light item this year, but uh, Councilwoman Gross, thank you. Sorry.
Sorry, it's been a very long meeting. I'll try to be brief. But I do appreciate that the administration is working on critical sidewalks. It really is, just to kind of, you know, summarize the frustrations that residents have is that we are all, you know, forcing constituents to pay for, residents have to repair sidewalks. But we issue the citations if the sidewalks are not in perfect conditions, right? And then the constituent has to bear the cost of replacing that sidewalk. And then we require that they be concrete. And concrete, yeah, you know, way many, many decades ago, um, I'm sure when this requirement was created, was far cheaper than it is now. Concrete is actually one of the more expensive things that we're having supply problems with and the price keeps going up. Um, some number of years ago, council increased the amount of reimbursement. I think it's only up to eight dollars a square foot um that we reimburse to you. So there is equity issues, I believe, not only in providing sidewalks, as we've heard. Bernadette, come and elevate this conversation for us, for public comment. Um, and who can, um, you know, that the sidewalks be usable um for, for equity for people who are trying to get places on the sidewalks, but also in, in who is bearing the cost. Um, and so I, I laud the administration for looking at how some sidewalks maybe need um our attention. Um, and um, thank you to Councilwoman Smith for reminding me that I did a post-agenda on sidewalk materials probably almost eight years ago, maybe it was at least seven years ago. And I would be happy to bring back um that conversation so that we can explore, you know, what materials are better for our environment, for our stormwater um, um, uh capture, which we're so concerned about. We had um testimony about pervious paving. It's been quite a few years now and there are cities that have moved ahead and would be great lessons learned for us. Um, and so I look forward to talking more about it and I'm supportive today. Thank you.
You. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 635.
Bill 635, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to complete a stoplight removal study in the amount of $96,000 in authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 636.
Bill 636, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to replace the stoplight at the corner of Brighton and Jacksonia in the amount of $195,990.60 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 637.
Bill 637, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to replace the stoplight at the corner of Bradock and Forbes in the amount of $471,375.82 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Everybody's tired.
Bill 638.
Bill 638, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multi-module transportation fund for the South 21st Street Complete Green Street Project and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $1,036,422.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 640.
We skipped 639?
Oh, I did, sorry. Bill 639.
Bill 639, Resolution Amending Resolution 307, approved May 12th, 2015, granting unto United States General Services Administration, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to remove, relocate existing bollards and planters and replace with security compliant bollards, a post and beam rail, and a swing gate at 1,000 Liberty Avenue, 2rd Ward, 6th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, are the bollards we use now not compliant?
Right. No, they, they're reconfiguring what's currently there.
This is replaced with security compliant bollards. So I'm just wondering, are other ones not?
This is for in front of the federal building.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 640.
Bill 640, Resolution Vacating Regis Way and a Portion of Rapidan Way, both located in the ballpark plan as recorded in Plan Book Volume 19, page 56, situated in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Bill 661.
Bill 661, Resolution Accepting a New Street Name, Woodring Court in the 23rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June of 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to hold one, one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Bill 662.
Bill 662, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to enter into a license agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Regional Transit and the Bank of New York Mellon for the installation and maintenance of the Virgil Cantini Mosaic for cost not to exceed $1.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 663.
Bill 663, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 715 of 2021 for the Mayor and the Department of Permits, Licensing, and Inspections to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Avenue Insights and Analytics to digitize microfiche and aperture cards holding historic permitting data and add them to the department's digital library. The extension of this agreement will add an additional year of services in $22,354.86 of compensation. The agreement is chargeable and payable from the following account in an amount not to exceed $282,354.86.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 672.
Bill 672, Resolution Calling for Promoting Affordable Commercial and Residential Development in the City of Pittsburgh by exploring the expansion of the development of accessory dwelling units and detached accessory dwelling units.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, a lot of discussion. Uh, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I am um putting forward this bill to explore accessory dwelling units. Um, it is just a resolution that is requesting a report back from the administration on barriers or, and opportunities um across the city. Um, these are backyard houses, right? And so that's the technical term in our zoning code um is accessory dwelling units because it only applies if there's already someone living um on a parcel in the city, right, in a home. And then it would be adding a second living unit. So maybe an attic apartment or a basement apartment or a garage apartment or even a second entirely separate um structure in the backyard. Um, this is kind of in the category, as I mentioned when I discussed the limited equity housing co-ops. It's one of those I, new ideas or old ideas that's new again, right? Um, what is old is new. What is new is old. Uh, my district is full of accessory dwelling units, but when they were built, they weren't called accessory dwelling units. It was just the house that you built in your backyard, maybe for your own cousins, maybe for your next door's neighbors' cousins. So if you go uh in Bloomfield, for example, and you turn off Liberty Avenue and you go in any of the alley streets, they, it's fully lined. It's an entire residential street in what was built originally just to be the alley in the back of the front house. Um, 10th Ward Lawrenceville, full of alley houses, right? Natrona Way, um, in Lawrenceville, State Way in Bloomfield. They are lined with houses. Um, and they are technically accessory dwelling units. And the problem with what exists now in city code that didn't, this zoning code didn't exist at the time when those houses were built, is that you're not allowed to build them. You're just flat out not allowed. You can get a variance, and I've had multiple um constituents do that. Um, in both cases, it was to take care of mom, right? And so in a lot of cities, they call them granny flats. Um, and so both in Morningside and in Highland Park, the constituents were forced to spend many, many weeks to get signatures from neighbors, to have public testimony, to um uh hire architects and have site plans, go through an expensive uh pro- review process, um literally have a public hearing at the Zoning Board of Appeals. and have to get a positive vote from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it's a burdensome process to, an old solution to more people wanting to move into your neighborhood. So many cities, in fact, many states now have permitted these structures statewide. California, New Hampshire, Vermont, Oregon, Rhode Island. They're now permitted everywhere. So, but again, this is just the beginning of a conversation so that council can have more facts in front of it. And so we're giving the administration a few months. They're eager to talk. We already have a meeting set up with the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of City Planning and permits, licenses, and inspections. I'd like to draw your attention to just one part that other cities have explored that I'm particularly excited about, which is that they asked their building permits or permits, licenses, and inspections department to pre-select designs that would be automatically permitted. So that you don't have to hire an architect, you don't have to have the blueprints drawn up, you don't have to have that upfront expense. So it dramatically lowers not just the red tape of applying to have, to add housing on your property, but also makes a readily available path to doing that. So I'm really excited about that part. I'm looking forward to what the administration kind of explores and reports back to council, and I hope that council is supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clarky.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Permit me to have an interrogatory with Councilwoman Gross on this, I guess, because I really want to rehash our private conversations we had behind closed doors. So my district, you know, understands a few things. First of all, you always get my attention when you talk about building, or building something as a builder and a contractor, you know. It's just, my antennas go up, I guess. But to be clear, this legislation, at this point, is just simply an in-depth look at identifying possibilities and looking at other models that cities have done to possibly put this into effect. So we are not approving for little homes to be built in backyards. At this point, we are, this is an in-depth investigation, right?
That's correct. So there's a series of questions in the bill that I'm happy to, you know, post or email to anyone. You can find it on Legisarts, Bill 2022-0672. And it asks a series of questions for the administration to come back with that also all members kind of have the same report, and the public has the same report in front of them. Where do, where do these things already exist in the city? Are there, you know, what are the costs and permit fees associated? What are the, you know, implications for owner occupancy, those kinds of things? So that we can all then have a more informed discussion as we explore the idea.
So I'm very interested in this. I happen to think my district will welcome this. But I do have a few questions about the housing itself. And you touched on cutting the red tape, permits, you know, things of that nature, which I know prevents people from building a deck in my district, okay? So to build a dwelling and, you know, to have a house there, that's going to be vitally important, I feel. And if we could cut that red tape, you know, it's certainly welcomed by anybody who's building. But also, we look at this, and we could look at this as a source of revenue for, say, you know, an elderly couple or anybody who has the land mass or, you know, the property to do so. You know, this could be another source of income. So I'm just going to throw out numbers at you, and I know none of these are, you know, concrete, but say it costs $15,000 to build one of these, you know, alley homes, I guess. Maybe that's not the proper word, but, you know, kind of backyard, you know, dwellings. At $15,000, you know, say you finance that, and you charge it. And this is, this is the part I really like about it. It almost ties into affordable housing. And it does so, in a way, bringing the private market into it. And that, to me, is just one of the jigsaw pieces of puzzle that you always talk about with affordable housing. So I see two things here. I see an extra source of income for folks who are looking for it. And, you know, and I would imagine one of these places, I'm envisioning really small, because it's in your backyard. Say, let's just use $500 as a round figure. Place costs you 15 to build, you're, you know, getting $500 a month, you're getting $6,000 a year in rent. So in the third year, you start making a profit. And, you know, it's like having a, it's real estate, actually. And to provide that extra income for some families, I think, would be great. To, you know, give the private sector the ability to build their own affordable housing is even better yet. So I did have a question about the sewer lines. And you probably not too far in this, but PWSA, when I look at, I have a garage, you know, I have a room built on the back of my garage. It would be easily converted for me. I'm not interested in this, but I'm just using it as an example. It'd be easily converted for me. However, I would say the bulk of the cost would be tapping into our sewer lines and getting the plumbing there. Do you know of any cities who have models where, especially if we're using it specifically towards affordable housing, where, say, PWSA can come in and give a, you know, break?
Councilman, there's Section 3 says, "Explore regulatory changes," so I'm adding in, especially water and sewer. We can amend it technically if you want by Tuesday. But I think, I know what's happened, you know, 100 years ago, because I have so many of these alley houses, really a significant number. I have one of our state representatives, Representative Vina Morado, I don't think would be embarrassed to say, she lives in one of these alley houses in Lawrence, in 10th Avenue, in 10th Ward, excuse me. My, during the water main replacements and the lateral replacements, what we found were water laterals that were 100 feet long, right? They were 100-year-old laterals that were 100 feet long, but because the water main was not in the alley, the water main was in the front street. So that was the original water main to the, to the original house. So absolutely, this is the kind of fact-finding that we will need. So we should ask PWSA about how the added laterals can be permitted and what would be the approximate cost. I think that's an excellent question.
Because for me, that would be the challenge. I already have the space, I already have it built. But I know my water, my sewage goes out front of the house, and we're talking 100 feet here. And I think, wow, I haven't priced that, but it's going to be more than the actual little home that I build or, you know, make into. You touched on this, regulation, different sizes and models. To me, that's where, my caution was, is somebody going to build, take up their entire backyard and build a two-story, you know, housing unit? But in this legislation, and then, I guess, once we, you know, do the fact-finding on it, it would be regulated as to size, height, things of that nature.
We'd be asking for suggestions from the administration so that they would take, you know, come, look, they have the staffing and the capacity to look at that, so they could bring it back. We certainly are already doing some of our research for other cities in anticipation of this conversation. I'm actually referring to a document in front of me right now, published by AARP. So nationwide, AARP is advocating for cities to do exactly this, to adopt more friendly regulatory and permitting fees for accessory dwelling units. Because they are, how they say, how they expand housing options for people of all ages. And with their own priority of helping people age in place in the neighborhoods and communities that support them, in their research, ADUs are how that, is one of the ways that can happen, right? So there's ways that we can help people continue to afford to live where they want, because either they become the renters, or they become the landlords, right? So they have maybe rental income from the accessory dwelling unit. In other cases, it's mom and dad moving into the smaller dwelling in the back and either having renters or family in the front. So it becomes a really great tool for some families to retain that family asset, to retain the family house. And in their explorations, it actually, again, you know, we'll have lots of more time to talk about this, since this is just a report and recommendation to council. But we will have, there are elements of equity, right? It's our wealthier neighbors and residents who are able to navigate all of the barriers that we have put in place, having site plans, having architects, having the construction costs, having the burden of regulatory processes. And so you see, in cities where there have been studies, you see that there are more of the ADUs. When there are regulatory barriers like we have, there are more of them in wealthier neighborhoods, right? And so those households are gaining the rental income.
Right.
And the neighborhoods and households that do not have these resources are not able to access this value, this way to add value to their property. So I think that there's a lot here to explore, and I'm looking forward to the conversation.
And I look forward to the fact-finding mission. And if it, I truly believe this model would work in Pittsburgh, because as you said, in the past, it was part of Pittsburgh, still is in your district, I believe. Again, I like two things about it. I like the fact that somebody can look at this as extra income for, you know, years to come. And on top of all that, you know, if you're making, you know, $6,000 a year extra income use, also increases the value of your property and the value of your home when you have another dwelling on there, providing you keep it in good shape. But the other factor that I really like is, this is really, could tap in and be a piece of the puzzle for you with affordable housing. And isn't that really what, or part of the big reason what drives you towards this?
Absolutely. So we have, again, trying to put as many irons in the fire as we can, right? We know that inclusionary zoning is not going to solve all of our affordable housing needs. We know even if we did photobond and do new construction, it's not going to fill it quickly enough. And so let's just examine where maybe we're putting up barriers. And if we can remove those barriers, let's do that.
I feel like you're, in this fashion, that we're putting the affordable housing, we're giving the ability for private homeowners to produce affordable housing. And again, another piece of the pie, I know you're counting units as you go on every year. And if we can add, you know, 100 units a year by doing it this way, fantastic. So I know other members have questions, but in closing, I just want to say this. With all the work you do around affordable housing, I'm speaking to you, of course, Councilwoman Gross, you know, inclusionary zoning, co-ops, helping me with Burke Place up in Carrick, you know, I just can't help but to think, wouldn't you be a perfect fit to be on the URA board? And I know Councilwoman Kayla Smith brought that up before, and you've talked about it many times. And we also have Councilwoman Lavelle on that board, which I know he represents very well and is very astute at what he does. I would love to see another council member on the URA board. And, you know, I just feel that Councilwoman Gross would be the perfect fit there. And I'm not asking you to answer this question, by the way. I don't want to, you know, put you on the spot by any means. But, you know, I'm just looking at it as kind of like, say, a football coach that I used to be, right? You put the best person in a position for the city of Pittsburgh, and the two go hand-
Were you a winning coach?
I was, yes. So the two go hand in hand, you know, with the work that, the work that she does around affordable housing, and housing in general, not just affordable housing. You know, I just feel it's a perfect match. And I'm not sure the politics as the URA board goes. I know Mr. Lavelle probably is. I know there's five members, but I feel we need to get her on the URA board. So again, I'm not asking you to respond to that. Again, I want to put you on the spot. And I'm certainly not looking to increase your workload, so.
I would, I would like to acknowledge that Councilwoman Burgess and Councilwoman Lavelle spearheaded our council's focus on affordable housing, as I always like to acknowledge.
Yes.
But then over the years, I want to say that it's, we know that as a city, we cannot just provide affordable housing in our lowest-resourced neighborhoods because the Supreme Court of the United States said so, right? So we are to, and all cities are supposed to do what they can, everything they can, to put affordable housing in neighborhoods of opportunity. And I consider the neighborhoods that I represent, all of, basically all of it, to be neighborhoods of opportunity, meaning there is access to resources, there's plentiful transit, there's plentiful food options, there's access to schools. These are the kinds of neighborhoods where people can have lives that they succeed. But it's hard to do because you're competing with a very stiff competition from the private real estate market. Nationwide private equity dumping millions of dollars into acquiring those parcels, into building that housing. And so it's like you're in a wrestling match every day. And so it takes, I think, all of us to look for all of the tools and all of the ways where we can either incentivize more housing and affordable housing and also remove barriers, even from something that maybe wasn't on our radar before, like accessory dwelling units. So, thank you.
Rossberger.
Well, I think everything has been said that could possibly be said about this topic. So I don't have much more to add. I mostly just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for introducing this bill and the bill that comes after this on LECs. If she'll allow me to, I'd like to add my name as a co-sponsor to these bills and support heartily. Yeah, I would just reiterate what has already been said. One, I don't think that this is just, you know, a possibility of a part of the affordable housing conversation. It is an integral part of it, and, you know, it's not just because some people might only be able to afford buying a house if there's an ADU attached to it, so that can be a supplemental part of the income, so they can pay their mortgage as housing prices and property values increase. It's also for people to be able to access affordable housing in an ADU in a neighborhood that has very large plots of land. And maybe there's so much pushback in that neighborhood that, you know, high-rise apartment buildings or condo units aren't going to be built anytime soon, or maybe it's not appropriate there currently under our zoning code. Like, this is a form of low-density, moderate-density, affordable housing that could be utilized in all parts of town. I love the fact that it's tied into aging in place as well. In California, where I grew up and where it's, there's a lot less red tape, I know of three families, just in my little circle there, where the folks who are my parents' age, who are aging, are moving into the ADU, selling their home to their adult children and can still be a family unit, but on the same property and retain that. That's wealth building for the younger generation as well. So just so many opportunities here, I'm really excited to explore this.
Madam Clarky, I just want to interject. I also wanted to be added as a co-sponsor to the bill, please.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilwoman President?
Yeah, I would like to be added as a sponsor. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Gross. And I do want to just add very quickly that the more money we send over to the URA, the more I think that we need to have more than one councilperson on the URA.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lavelle does an amazing job, and so I want to thank you for your work on there. But I also want to think that it'd be helpful to have more than one person there. And I think we really shouldn't be sending that much money if we're not going to have somebody watching it other than one member. I think we need to have multiple. We can't keep using the URA in other ways to send money and use our money across the city, trust funds, everything else, without those things coming back to city council without us having some oversight. And that's just my, I really feel strongly that we have to have, we're here to watch the dollars. And the more we do these things to avoid us, the more we're avoiding the accountability for the public. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I think this is a great, a great bill. In particular, I was just having a conversation with a family member that lives in another city, and they were talking about the troubles that they're having with an ADU, you know, getting the variance and everything correct. And it's a much larger city than ours. And so thanks for your efforts on this, and I'd like to be as a co-sponsor as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill 676.
Excuse me, Bill 676, resolution amending resolution number 234 of 2022, promoting affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh by exploring the expansion of limited equity housing cooperatives, LECs, so as to extend the deadline for the presentation of the report to the city council to October 11, 2022.
Motion to approve, discussion, I'll defer.
Second.
Or, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the administration is making progress on this one. I'll note that this is one of the things that, because, as I was mentioning much earlier in this very long meeting, city planning is really understaffed and continues to lose people, lost my neighborhood planner just last week to the private market. And so we were giving them a little time. But once again, we've had operators of limited equity co-ops reach out to us. I've had conversations, I've had resources and referrals, I have more meetings coming up. So I feel like the most of the questions have been answered, but we're giving the administration a little more time to kind of wrap it up so that it's ready and a full report back to council. We're just changing the date here to October. That's all.
Further discussion? Sorry, I got locked.
This is the limited equity housing co-op, and we're just changing the date to give the administration more time.
Okay. Is that a motion to amend?
No, the- No, the, oh, you're, this is the amendment. So yes, I beg your pardon. So motion to, it's not an amendment. This is like, we submitted it as an amendment.
It's a resolution amending.
Ah, okay. Got you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for, I was, I was thinking of something else. I apologize. Innovate, that moves us to Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first new paper is Bill 656.
Bill 656, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 427 of 2021, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to extend the professional service agreements with S T R Grants LLC for software services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a term of one year at an additional cost not to exceed $44,218.09.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 657.
Bill 657, Resolution Amending Resolution 470 of 2020, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with R T Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance processing system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 659.
Bill 659, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses and inspections, the director of city planning and the chief of innovation and performance to enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreements with Building Eye Inc. to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit license and violation data in order to add an additional year of services and $94,900 of compensation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new paper is Bill 641.
Bill 641, Resolution of the City of Pittsburgh Adopting an Amendment to the Steel Valley Authority's Articles of incorporation to decrease the number of members of the Board of Directors of the Authority.
Second.
Second with discussion?
With discussion. Council President?
Yeah, could you tell me why we're doing this? Because it was my understanding they wanted to remove a council member position on it. And I said no. So I'm wondering how it got on here now and who do they intend on cutting?
All right, that's an excellent question. I did not get a briefing on this bill, so if you have someone, I would love to hold it. That'd be fine. Two weeks?
Yes, please.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. Bill 642.
Bill 642, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1530 Cliff Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 643.
Bill 643, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for proposed land development located in the 5100 block of Rosetta Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 644.
Bill 644, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 114 West North Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 645.
Bill 645, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Hillman Library Expansion, a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania property, project which will involve the construction of an addition interior renovations, exterior renovations and site improvements to the Hillman Library. The site address is 3960 Forbes Avenue, Fourth Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. And I believe that takes to our last bill, 646.
Bill 646, Resolution Adopting, I'm sorry, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation and reimbursement agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to reimburse expenses of P W S A incurred for roadway base impavement restoration performed by P W S A on behalf of utilities and the city in advance of the Bus Rapid Transit Project at an amount not to exceed $557,002.24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a few meeting announcements. Next week, offices will be closed on Monday, September 5th in observance of Labor Day. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, September 6th and Wednesday, September 7th, respectively. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. To register, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Yes, President Smith.
Thank you. A couple of things. Yesterday, we mentioned that we would form a committee to work with the administration, the county, and anybody that we need to address the homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh. And I'm going to appoint Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Wilson, Councilwoman Colgill, and have one more seat open for a member. If anybody's interested, you know, let me know. And then we'll work with Ricky Moody and, and others to make sure that we address the, this in a way that we're getting all the right people at the table. And there's a lot of people I know that we have to bring to the table. And with, with that said, I also want to talk a little bit about the number of policing. It's my understanding that our numbers are down quite a bit. And Councilman Colgill and I had some meetings. And I mean, it's getting to a point where it's concerning. Not that, I understand that there might be different directions that people want to go with policing. But leaving the communities with very few people actually reporting to the zones, in some cases, some of the most dangerous zones, having very low numbers. And I think what I'm understanding is we're going to pay some of our new officers, some of them are new recruits. And correct me, because I know you have a lot more information than I do. And we'll ask Councilman Kraus to work on this when he returns. But I, you know, with you too. But I, it's my understanding that we have a lot of young officers on the streets working a lot of forced overtime. And if that's the case, people with guns, tired and exhausted, working a lot of overtime is not always a great combination. And so I think that it's a conversation that you and I, Councilwoman Colgill, want to have. And I think that it's also something Councilman Kraus will address as he becomes the chairperson of Public Safety.
May I?
Please. It's, it's up to the-
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman-
So I would say it's beyond concerning. To me, it's almost alarming at this point. The position that we're going to be in if we continue down this same road, okay? I think maybe perhaps we should move that post-agenda to a point where we can all talk about it and lay out the facts. I want this council, I want my district, I want the public to know the situation we're in before it becomes alarming and before it becomes a real problem to the city of Pittsburgh. So I thank you for bringing it up, Madam President. I thank you for, you know, having the meetings that we've had to clarify and, you know, you know, get the, the details and the facts. But I look forward to sharing those with this council and with the public.
And I'll just say, I had a meeting, I meet, you know, Director Hystrick and previous people that were here and, and people here today. I'll meet them occasionally for coffee or lunch or whatever. And I was meeting with Director Hystrick, former Director Hystrick at the time. And you called and asked if we could meet with you and the F O P. And so, I mean, I was surprised to hear the conversation because, you know, I didn't realize it was as serious as, as it may be. And so I, and I do believe that the administration is working on some things. I just think we would like to know what those things are. Council needs to be included in some of those conversations. So, you know, we haven't had a chairperson for that committee, but now we do. So I think that will help us get some, some better answers too. But I'll work at the meeting schedule, the post-agenda schedule.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing attention to it.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else from members? Councilwoman Burgess?
For Councilwoman Gross's concern about affordable housing. I think I need to say every now and then that although I talk about affordable housing, affordable housing is not my goal. It has never been my goal. If you go to my district, I can take you to a corner of Fifth Avenue and Penn Avenue in my district. On that corner, one where the Chatham Graduate School is, is technically Lormer. Kind of corner to that is South Point Breeze, which is in Erica's district now, but will, I think, be in mine moving forward. So in my district will be these two corners that are perpendicular to each other. On the one side has the lowest life, has one of the lowest life expectancy of any neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh. Lormer has one of the lo- lowest percentage of life expectancy, not only in the city, but in the county. Right across the street, perpendicular, right across the, the intersection, is South Point Breeze, which has one of the highest life expectancies in the city of Pittsburgh and one of the highest life expectancies in Agony County. We have built housing in Lormer, some of which are affordable. But let me be clear. If you build affordable housing in any poor neighborhood, it will not make it better by itself. In fact, if you simply pour affordable housing into low-income neighborhoods, 20 years from now, those low-income, new low-income housing units will be awful and be probably violent, poor and dangerous. So I've never been a fan of affordable housing by itself. What you need is a comprehensive strategy to rebuild neighborhoods. Use affordable housing on the front end, mixed income housing, so that you bring in city resources to provide the groundwork. But to wrap around that, you need market rate housing. You need, because you need the income of those people to be able to afford the restaurants and the, the theaters and the drugstores and the cleaners that every neighborhood deserves and needs to have. My goal for every neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh is for it to be healthy, safe, and have a high quality of life. I want that for Carrick and Beechview. I want that from, I want that from Sheridan and for Ferry View. I want that from the Hill District.
Or Ferrywood.
Ferrywood, Ferrywood. I don't know it well. I want that from the North Side neighborhoods. And so, and so, but I think too often, we have this conversation in a silo where we don't really talk about it in terms of what's really needed to make it, because what I want, and maybe I'm nuts. And I've said this privately. I, and I am nuts.
Is that a question?
But I don't-
Second.
And I think the reason that, and, and I've been, I've spent the last three months intensively studying this public health thing. I think what makes it interesting of using the public health approach is we're not saying that, that poor communities need investment because they're poor. They do, but that's not what we're saying anymore. We're not saying that poor communities need investment because they're black and because of discrimination. That's true, but that's not, that's not the argument. We're not saying that the, we're, we're not saying that, that poor communities and black communities need investment because, you know, equity is the right thing to do. That, it is. That's not it. What the CDC has now taught us, what COVID has now taught us, is that the health outcomes for these poor communities are abysmal. In those communities, because of COVID, they lost their businesses. They've lost lives. They are disproportionately, COVID has killed them. And the reason it's killed them is because of all these underlying factors. Lack of affordable housing, not having businesses, not having quality schools, not having after-school programming, not have activities for kids. And so what we have an attempt, what I, what my argument now is, and I think they're right, we have to make every community healthy, every citizen healthy. Every community has a right to be healthy. And what does it take to be healthy? Well, it may take more housing, yes. It may take drugstores. It may take after-school programs. And I'm going to suggest, maybe because I've been reading it so much, but I, and in, in the legislation I introduced today and what I will be advocating for, is that's really what we should be doing now as a city, is we should be approaching all that we do from the perspective of the health of the residents and the health of the communities. And that we can coordinate it, right? We can coordinate it. Because at the end of the day, every community needs to be healthy, safe and a high quality of life. Every, 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 every community, every single community. And so what we do is we go into communities and say, okay, how's your quality of life? And if you have everything you need, well, you may, you have nine of the 10 things. You need this one thing. Well, let's help you do this one thing. And we go into communities and say, here are the 10 things. And there's, you have one of them. Let's help you with the nine you don't have. That, I, I think we, I don't think we, this, I think, the focus, although I do, I, I represent the largest poorest communities in Pittsburgh. I do. I, I represent the poorest, largest black communities in Pittsburgh. But I have not advocated for them in isolation. My, my goal is a Pittsburgh where everybody prospers. When we start talking about a city for all, I don't know how long ago now.
Tried it with the pay raise.
You know, everybody, I said, everybody. And I, and I think council should be lifted up. I think, I, I support every, every person in the city of Pittsburgh should be lifted up. And I think we have a moment in history because of COVID has taught us that if we don't lift them up, there will be another pandemic. There'll be another economic turndown. There's going to be all these other stresses. Let's put all, let's put our time and energy of, of thinking about how the whole city becomes healthier. And if the whole city becomes healthier, then my kids, your kids, every kid has a better quality of life. I say that because I don't say, I don't have a chance to say that all the time. So I, I, I support affordable housing as simply an initial strategy for community rebuilding. But you have to accompany affordable housing, hopefully that is mixed income, with other, other housing, other investments, private dollars in order to regenerate these communities so that they are completely healthy, safe, and have a high quality of life or well-being, as the CDC says. And I'm sorry to take that time, but I wanted to sort of lay out my real vision because I don't want to be, I don't want to be, I want to make sure that we understand that affordable housing is simply the city's investment to try to get the private market that right now does not fund black communities, right now does not fund black people, that right now is, is discriminatory in their practices. We are 23% of the population and we're getting 8% of the loans. The private market, the banks are discriminating in, in open sight against black people and black communities. But if the city invests in these poorer communities, we can now, like Lormer, we can coax the private dollars into those same communities because we need community transformation. Every community deserves. If I take you to Homewood today, there's no sit-down restaurant in Homewood. There's no drugstore in Homewood. There's no clothing store in Homewood. There's almost no place to get fresh vegetables in Homewood. There is only one gas station right now in all of Homewood. That's Homewood East, that's Homewood South, North and West. And that's on the last piece of parcel on Homewood on Fifth Avenue where 1,000 people go to, from Pittsburgh, from Oakland to Fox Chapel every day. And it's only in that corner. There is no other gas stations anywhere in my, in that, in that, in those three, it's actually three neighborhoods, Homewood North, Homewood South, Homewood West. Low, low, low X. So we have to, we have to be, we have to be thoughtful. Doesn't, don't those kids deserve to live long lives? Should they, should, would they live? Doom them to die at an early age? Or should we be investing in those communities so that those children can live the same quality of life and the same life expectancy as people in Squirrel Hill and South Side Flags and, and, and any other district in the city? And so my, I, I, I think we can, and we know how to do it. The, the interesting part of all this work, Councilwoman Lavelle and I talked about this, is we know how to do it now. The question isn't how to do it. We know exactly how to do this now. We know exactly how to do it. We know, we know how to invest in it. We know how to do it. The question is, will there be the political wheel, both locally- The question is, will there be the political will, both locally, state, and federal, to provide the resources to invest in these communities? And we will work collaboratively. Because, you know, Teresa knows, she, she teases me, but she does, she knows a lot of people in my district. And so her presence is helpful. It, it's going to take all of us, and I, I guess that's my thinking. It's going to take all, me in the East End by myself, no. The mayor, all of us, the county executive, the state reps, the, all of us got to work together to build all of these communities so that we become the city that's on a shining heel, that we become the city for all, that we become what we can become. And we're at that moment of time with resources and expertise that we actually can begin to do this. That's two. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you. Anything else from members? If not, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Tim.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.